Oh, right. Afternoon, everybody.
Yeah, we'll be good.
All right, yeah, that's how it gets seen.
Yeah, great. Grandma.
Good evening, everybody. The July 8th, 2024 regular meeting of the Malibu City Council is now called to order. In-person participants, if you'd like to speak, please submit your request to speak for us with a clerk on my right. Remote participants, if you'd like to speak, please join the Zoom webinar meeting printed on the agenda and raise your hand in Zoom when the item you wish to speak on is called. Kelsey, can we please get a roll call, please?
Councilmember Grisanti.
Here.
Councilmember Riggins.
Here.
Councilmember Silverstein.
Present.
Mayor Protem Stewart.
Here.
Mayor Yurin.
Here.
You have a quorum.
Thank you very much. Do we have any speaker slips, Kelsey? We do have a speaker slip. All right. Kevin, come on up.
Big crowd here tonight, huh?
There you go. Wow, didn't.
Yeah.
Got to get early to get a good seat.
Mayor Yurin, members of the council. I'm here to speak on the unification petition. It's on closed session. And Bruce, I think you would agree that one of the most important qualities, skills, for an attorney is paying attention to the decision-maker and listening to what they are saying to you, where they're going on a matter. And if you watched the last county committee meeting and some in the past, you would see that this county committee, the majority of them, want to grant the petition for unification. And they think that the revenue sharing that's been worked, that folks have been working on for many years, I remember I was on the Malibu Unification Negotiations Committee back in 2015, 16, that it's silly. They want to grant the petition so that they can move Santa Monica to trust the area elections. Let them do it. Go forward with the petition. There's no reason not to. You can still continue negotiating about, you know, a potential legislative solution, but go forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Kevin. Do we have any, no, any hands?
No, we don't have any raised hands or participants on Zoom.
All right, any questions from the council, comments? If not, we will move to closed session. Closed session we're going to. We'll be back, give you a report when we finish. Thank you.
...
We're waiting on our city managers. Be ready to go in a second. There he is. Okay. That won't be the first time.
Yes, we're ready to begin the broadcast.
Okay. It's just getting all the pieces in place. Give us one second. Ready? Good evening, everybody. The July 8th, 2024 regular meeting of Malibu City Council is now called to order. In-person participants, if you'd like to speak, please submit your request to speak. There's a clerk on my right. Remote participants, if you'd like to speak, please join the Zoom webinar meeting printed on the agenda. And raise your hand in Zoom when the item you wish to speak on is called. Kelsey, can I get a roll call, please?
Councilmember Gassanti.
Here.
Councilmember Riggins.
Here.
Councilmember Silverstein.
Present.
Mayor Protem Stewart.
Here.
Mayor Urey.
Here.
You have a quorum.
Okay, do we want to get a report on the closed session first, or?
I'm happy to do the pledge first, or?
Do the pledge? Okay. Lloyd, lead us on the pledge, please.
Right hand of your heart, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic where which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Kelsey, can I get a report on the posting of the agenda?
The agenda for this meeting was properly posted on June 28th, 2024, with the amended agenda posted on July 5th, 2024. And would you like that closed session report next?
Yeah, do that. Yes. Trevor?
Yes, at 5:00 PM, the city council met an open session, then recessed to closed session for the items listed on the posted agenda. No reportable action was taken, but the council did want to have a report made, which will be provided by my colleague Christine Wood.
Thank you. Good evening, mayor and members of the city council. After, I'm sorry, my name is Christine Wood. I'm a deputy city attorney for the city of Malibu and and leading the school separation efforts. After careful consideration and extensive mediation efforts, the city of Malibu has concluded that it is in the city's best interest to resume the petition process it initially filed with the Los Angeles County Committee on School District Organization back in 2017. We are pleased that the mediation process resulted in a shared understanding that the formation of an independent Malibu Unified School District is in the best interest of all students. The city of Malibu remains fully committed to ensuring that both the future Santa Monica Unified School District and the future Malibu Unified School District are allocated a sufficient share of funding to provide a similar level of service at each school site as prior to separation. These were the principles that guided our mediation for the last few years and that will continue to inform the city's actions as we move forward with the county committee. We understand that this decision requires a significant communication effort to ensure the Malibu community is fully informed and engaged. The city will remain transparent and inclusive throughout this process, and we encourage all residents to participate actively as we advance through the county committee's process. Thank you.
Christine, thank you very, very much. Trevor, anything else you want to add?
No.
Okay. Can I get a approval of the agenda, motion to approve the agenda?
I'd like to approve the agenda, but I have two items I'd like to modify on it. First off, I'd like to close in the memory of a 44-year-old Martin Okeke, a ride-share driver who was killed on PCH in Malibu on the night of July 4th. Secondly, I'd like to bifurcate the city manager's comments for him to read a statement regarding Novu before the public comments, and then continue his comments as listed in Agenda Item 2B, City Manager Updates.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Got it. Okay, so.
Can I also pull item number 3B3?
Sure.
I'm sorry.
Okay, so city manager?
Sorry, Mr. Mayor. One of the things for council's consideration, we do have on tonight the item for the appointment to the youth commission. That might be a quick item, and I know we have some youth who are on, online on Zoom. If council wants to knock that out early and maybe move that up, but if not, we can, we can take that at the regular time.
Sounds like a great idea.
All in favor?
Do you guys want to have it?
Where do I have it?
Before consent?
Move it before consent?
Before consent.
Sure. Everybody agree?
Agreed.
Agreed.
Done.
That was formal consensus to move item 7A before the consent calendar.
Okay, Steve. Anything else you got?
Sorry, no, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, okay. Go back to reorganize. All right, we have, we're now moving to the city council reorganization. I think you're up first.
So the first item is for presentations to the outgoing mayor. The city does have an award, but if anyone else would also like to make presentations to the outgoing mayor, you can't submit a speaker slip.
That's me. That's you.
All right. I'd like to stand up for this, but the mic doesn't reach that far, so I've got to say a few things and we'll do the picture later. It's been a privilege to have Steve Urey as our mayor. This is coming up on the end of his term, first term on the city, and he has worked diligently. It has been an honor and a pleasure to sit beside him here as he's guided the city for these last nine and a half months. And it's, it's been good for all of us to have him, as well as the rest of the council members' experience here. And with that, the city would like to present to you a plaque, a wave, and I'll give it to you like this that says, and let me read it out loud, says, "Presented to Steve Urey with deep appreciation for outstanding service and dedication as the mayor of the city of Malibu, 2023 to 2024." It's Doug Stewart, Mayor Protem, Mary Ann Riggins, council member, Paul Gassani, council member, and Bruce Silverstein, council member.
And thank you very, very much. Thank you. I got a lot of fraternity brothers said this would never happen. All right. Any speaker slips? No, just speakers. Yeah, any, any present?
No, we don't. I'm sorry, we do have two raised hands on Zoom for presentations to the outgoing mayor.
Okay.
Tim Boswell.
Tim?
Hello, council members. My name is Tim Boswell. I am reading the first part of a letter dated June 24th, 2024 by Assistant Planning Director Adrian Fernandez. Dear city council members, I'm writing to you as a colleague and an employee to finally raise the curtain on abuses and collusion that I have both witnessed.
I believe, and I'm more than happy to have you read that letter, but I don't think this is the appropriate time for that. Who's your second hand?
Roxanne.
Roxanne.
Hi, my name is Roxanne. I'm reading the first part of a letter dated June 24th by Assistant Planning Director Adrian Fernandez.
Okay, Roxanne, thank you very much. We do appreciate that, and we'll give you a chance to do that, but this is not the appropriate time for that either.
Yes, mayor, to clarify, this is the time for anyone who'd like to make a presentation or comments to the outgoing mayor on his term of service. Public comment for items not on the agenda will be heard after these presentation items.
Those callers will be called on when, for bringing up 2A?
Yes, and they can raise their hands when item 2A is called for public comment for items not on the agenda.
Can I ask a question? I'm assuming from how those comments started that they're not about the mayor, but we don't know that for a fact. Can we just ask them whether it is or it isn't before we cut them off?
Okay, who was Roxanne? Who was the first one?
Tim.
Tim, Tim, Tim and Roxanne, if you're out there, I assume those comments were designed to be focused on Adrian, not exactly my ex as the mayor. Is that correct?
We do it in regular public comment. That's preferred.
Okay. Roxanne, you with him?
Yes.
I'm assuming she is. Okay, very good. All right, so I've got a couple of comments that I can make as I leave, so let me make those. First, I want to thank the individual who came up with the idea of having council members rotate to have an opportunity to serve as mayor. I've had a lot of fun. It's been, you know, it's been a good time. I have to admit, I tried my best not to do anything too bizarre, and I think I achieved that. I occasionally got criticized for city council meetings that were a bit too casual, but I've never really been known for pomp and circumstance, so I hope I didn't really offend too many people. As a salute to the residents who voted me into, in office, I tried to stay true to my campaign promises, the most important being to work to improve the quality of life of the Malibu residents. Before we move along, I have some people I need to thank. And I'd like to start with city staff. First is Kelsey Pettyjohn. Kelsey has been a valuable companion. Every time I started to go south, she pulled me back in. I made her work a lot harder than she needed to, but she always did it with a smile. And Kelsey, I just wish more people had a chance to work with you to realize what a talented person you are, so thank you very much. The members of the city staff that addressed us during my meetings were outstanding. They demonstrated a mastery of their craft, they came prepared, and they spoke with authority. Best of all, their efforts consistently demonstrated their commitment to protect our environment and to improve the performance of the key departments of the city. I believe that the staff department heads also deserve recognition for the outstanding staff they've hired. Jason and Christina, who worked for Kelsey. Brandy Alea, who works for Public Works, and Tracy and Celicia, I believe I pronounced that name correct, who, who worked for the environmental, the environmental department, to name but a few. These are all very smart, talented individuals. And to me, it demonstrates that there are talented folks out there who will come to work for the city when the department heads create an environment that helps make the report successful. And if they do that, they will also stay. So thank you very much for that effort. I want to thank the residents, the peoples we work for. You came to the meetings well-informed, articulate in your comments, and passionate in your presentations. And I can assure you that your effort helped the council make better decisions. I strongly encourage you to continue that effort, and next time, bring your friends. Your presence helps ensure we will continue to make decisions that are in your best interest. And last but not least, I want to thank my fellow council members. This is not a one-man job. And while we do not always disagree on everything, we agreed on enough stuff for us to get some meaningful things accomplished. So with that, it's just about time to turn over the torch to your next mayor, who I feel confident would be Doug Stewart. During our time on the council, I've learned to respect his decision-making. I'm confident that moving forward, he will continue to have I'm confident that moving forward, he will continue to have the best interests of the residents of Malibu in all of his actions. And let me leave you with a final mayoral thought. If you walk Malibu's beaches, or you hike our canyons and mountains, or you simply sit back and enjoy our Mediterranean climate whilst 113 degrees someplace else and it's pretty nice down here, and you stay off PCH, you begin to realize how fortunate we are to be living in this place. With that good fortune comes responsibility, and that responsibility is to protect and preserve what we have so we can gift it to the next generation. During my time as mayor, you, our residents, have met and responded to the challenges we faced in protecting our fragile community. There will be more challenges in the future, so please maintain your vigilance and keep on fighting. With that, thank you very much. Thank you, Steve. All right, I'd like to open the floor for nominations for our next mayor.
Nominate Mr. Stewart.
Second?
Any other nominations? Okay, Kelsey, could we have a roll call? And as you vote, would you name the person you're voting for for mayor, please?
Councilmember Gassanti.
Doug Stewart.
Councilmember Riggins.
Doug Stewart.
Councilmember Silverstein.
Doug Stewart.
Mayor Pro Tem Stewart.
Epstein.
Mayor Uring.
Doug Stewart.
Motion carries.
Okay, thank you very, very much. What I would like to do now is hand the gavel over to my next mayor. Thank you very, very much, Doug.
Thank you very much. All right, now we need to elect a mayor pro tem, and the floor is now open for nominations of mayor pro tem. Do I hear any nominations?
I'd like to nominate Mary Ann Riggins.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right. Councilmember Riggins is nominated for mayor pro tem. Are there any further nominations for mayor pro tem? There being none, here are no further names. Nomination for mayor is now closed. Ask the clerk to call the roll.
Councilmember Gassanti.
Mary Ann Riggins.
Councilmember Riggins.
Take a lead from the mayor, Epstein.
Councilmember Silverstein.
Mary Ann Riggins.
Councilmember Uring.
Mary Ann Riggins.
Mayor Stewart.
Mary Ann Riggins.
Motion carries.
Very good, thank you.
All right. Now, I believe it's time for the oath of office.
Yes, Mayor, and Mayor Pro Tem, if you'd join us at the podium, your oaths can be administered.
I think we changed these where it's going.
For those of you who don't know it, I'm being sworn in by my lovely wife of 42 years. It's not 43 yet, 42, Sharon Stewart. All right.
Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Doug Stewart.
I, Doug Stewart.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will diligently serve as mayor of the City of Malibu.
That I will diligently serve as the mayor of the City of Malibu.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear truth and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the State of California.
To the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservations.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully.
That I will well and faithfully.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Of which I'm about to enter.
About which I'm about to enter.
I state your name.
I, Mary Ann Riggins.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will diligently serve.
That I will diligently serve.
As mayor pro tem of the City of Malibu.
As mayor pro tem of the City of Malibu.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the State of California.
To the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully.
And I will well and faithfully.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
Thank you so much, everyone.
Okay, we've accomplished the signage shuffle now, and I appreciate the staff having these prepared in advance. And I just want to say, too, I'm very proud to serve with Mary Ann. She and I were elected the same day in November of 2022, and it was, it was a fun campaign, and it's fun to serve with her, so thank you. Thanks for letting her be my co-pilot. All right, for those of you that can't see all the paperwork we have up here, this is someone that can to fly in an F-18 instruction manual up here today, so bear with us a little bit. Let's see.
Mayor, did you have any remarks you wanted to make as the newly-elected mayor?
I'm getting, that's down at the bottom of the page here. Yes, here we go. Learner's permit required here. All right, from the moment I became a council member, the people of Malibu entrusted me with making Malibu an even better place and living up to the mission statement. And for those of you that haven't seen our mission statement, it is everything to this city, and it's everything to me as well. It is quite a humbling experience to realize that I'm now the mayor of the town that I love and have even more responsibilities to lead the city in this additional role. When I was first sworn in as a council member, I thanked all those people who supported me, they encouraged me, and worked for my campaign. You have remained supportive and encouraging in the entire time. I am grateful every day to know that you were there for me and with me. I also made it clear when I became a council member, I was representing not only the people who voted for me, but everyone in our city. I promise to continue their representation as your mayor. To my fellow council members who voted me into this position, we've worked well together as the members of Malibu's 17th City Council. We have not agreed on several important issues, but we've been respectful of those differences of opinion. I trust that we will continue to be professional and respectful in how we govern our city and with the decorum that our residents expect. Mary Ann and I have terms that run until 2026. The other three council seats are coming up for an election in 119 days to create Malibu's 18th City Council. I will do my best to keep the dius focused on running the city but separate from the election campaigns. We're going to run a great city and we'll keep a great city that we have today. With that, thank you very much, and now let's get to work. All right, next item we have on the agenda, it's a presentation of commendation to our planning director, Richard Malika, in recognition to his service to the city, and Mary Ann Riggins asked if she could do the honors of making this presentation. So, Mary Ann, here you go.
Thank you.
Richard, you get to bring your whole team forward here. And while he's walking up, I'm also going to say that he and I have a bit of a kinship. We're both ham radio operators, and he's got a Cessna 172, which I envy.
Hi, you ready?
Sure.
Whereas Richard Malika has worked for the City of Malibu for 20 years in various roles within the planning department. He joined the City of Malibu in 2004 as a planning intern and currently serves as the city's planning director. Whereas Richard has a personal relationship with Malibu, as he was part of the Malibu High School's first graduating class and was awarded the Malibu Times 1996 Citizen Owner of the Year, which predates the Dolphin Award. He earned a bachelor's from UCLA and a master's in urban and regional planning from UC Irvine. Richard has earned these prestigious designations of AICP, American Institute of Certified Planners. Whereas Richard is highly respected by architects and building professionals for his problem-solving skills and hands-on field experience, a pioneer in implementing the Sea of East Local Coastal Program, accompanied with his knowledge of zoning ordinances and general plan, has made him invaluable to the city and the community. Whereas Richard is responsible for the planning department's rebuild response following the Woolsey Fire, under his leadership, 362 of the 450 homes destroyed in the fire have been approved by the planning department, and over 1,000 building applications have been approved. Whereas Richard's exceptional interpersonal skills have helped form an open and collaborative relationship between the city and the California Coastal Commission, enabling greater and more expedited progress with many important city projects, as well as enhancing a strong frame of teamwork within the planning department and its interactions with other city staff. And now, therefore, may it be resolved that the, that, we got to double that, the, that the council of the, City Council of the City of Malibu recognizes and thanks Richard Malika for his unwavering dedication to the support and betterment of the city and its residents, and wishes him great health, happiness, and success in all that lies ahead. And somehow, I think that includes you. Thank you, Richard. It has been fantastic. It's been a pleasure working with you. Boy, and taught me so much about the city. Hope that you learn so much from your family, back to your grandfather, your aunt, and all the great city loves and others. No, I've seen how you hold things, kiddo. And you do a very good job for a two-year-old. No, I appreciate this, and it's been a real pleasure working with a number of councils, community members, and just other folks in the city. It's really been a blast. Malibu, to me, has always been a great place. The one thing I really miss is the sea lion, though. The shrimp brunches on Sunday mornings was the microphone. A little too young, though, remember the sea lions in the parking lot? But really enjoyed working here, and.
That's red, that's red.
That's right, it is red. It means it's on, big girl. And it's been a real joy. When I started with the department, we didn't have our LCP. We were in the midst of a lawsuit with the Coastal Commission, and it's been just a pretty fun experience watching us go from a city with just municipal code to trying to figure out how do you implement an LCP when they literally dropped it on our doorstep with no instructions? That was all Patricia. You could thank her. She found a guide online, how to implement your LCP, and those first couple of years were really, it was, it was a good experience and a lot of fun with the different teams and, you know, got to work with a lot of neat people who have gone on to do much bigger and better things, and I'll follow with them, so I really appreciate it, and thank you, everybody.
It goes without saying that you can see how appreciative Richard is and what an asset he has been to the city. There is so much folklore and local knowledge and history in his career, but I think the best thing is, Richard, you're going to be able to look at this city for years to come and go, I was a part of this, I was a part of that. These buildings, or these buildings and these structures in our future is all part of, part of what you're leaving for us, so thank you very much. All right, with that, I'd like to move to the agenda where we bifurcated the city manager's message from 2B to a statement. Why don't you go on record now, please?
Thank you, and before I do that, Mr. Mayor, thank you. I would just remiss to also take a moment to also acknowledge Richard for all his contributions here at the city. It's, we have a huge hole to fill here, and we wish you well in your, in your future endeavors, so thank you very much, Richard. We're going to miss you greatly. Onto the matter at hand. Thank you, Mayor, for giving me the opportunity to address some of the concerns that we've been hearing regarding Nobu and the Fourth of July party. This matter is now an active code enforcement case, and a citation is being issued. The investigation into this is ongoing, and the matter could ultimately come before the city council. Would ask folks to please refrain from making any comments regarding the ongoing investigation to ensure that we have a fair and unbiased process. Any statement from a council member evidencing bias could, could require a recusal. However, I would like to clarify a few points leading up to the event. As indicated in a memo to the city council on July 2nd, the city does not have the independent ability to shut down these events. After we did hear from Nobu's council communication to the city on the morning of July 1st, on the morning of July 4th, excuse me, indicating that the event was proceeding despite the denial of the temporary use permit, the city attorney responded, advising them that doing so would constitute a willful violation of the city's municipal code and would subject them to code enforcement action. The city monitored the event throughout its duration for violations. The Los Angeles County Sheriff's Department also provided a traffic control officer to oversee the situation, and no significant traffic disruptions were reported. Furthermore, the fire marshal was not called as it did not appear that the event exceeded the restaurant's capacity. Regarding the fatal traffic collision that occurred later that evening, the matter is currently under investigation, and I will defer any questions on that crash investigation to Captain C2, who is here to give a report this evening. Additionally, we are aware Nobu has threatened to bring a lawsuit against the city, but at this point in time has not served the city with a summons or complaint. Given that this is an active code enforcement case, we ask that the specifics not be discussed in open session to ensure the integrity of the ongoing investigation and any potential proceedings. That is the conclusion of my statement. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McClary. All right, with that, we'll move on to the next item on the agenda. That's the written and oral communications from the public. We'll now hear from the public concerning matters which are not on the agenda. Remote participants, at the end of the public speakers, we'll call on you on Zoom. Please raise your hand if you'd like to speak on this item. All right, we have speaker cards. First one is Ranger Tim Para. And if Michael Shane can be on the ready, ready deck, please, you'll be next.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and respectful city council members. It's good to be here, good to see everybody. I have the MRCA Ranger Report for last month and for Fourth of July. In the last month, a total of 262 parking citations were issued. No service calls were generated for last month. Extended Ranger. Extended Ranger patrols were added during the Fourth of July deployment, and added were also public officers and our fire division to patrol areas that might have concerns of illegal fireworks and possible brush fires. Fortunately, no incidents occurred that night or and/or reported. During the roadwork also along East One Way, Murphy Way, and Escondido Park, Rangers closed the parking lot and advised of the road closures in progress. They also assisted public works with public safety and redirecting the public safely and also were there to make sure that the roadwork was completed and that the public safety were safe in the proper area during the construction. Eight administrative citations were issued at La Chusa Beach during the holidays for possession of alcohol, and also four citations at Escondido Canyon Trail for illegal off-trail use. And this concludes the MRC Ranger Report. Thank you.
Thank you, Ranger Tim. All right, Michelle Shane, and then Howard Rutske on deck.
Thank you. We are again assembled to lament a tragic loss on our cherished PCH. While it may be premature to allocate blame, it's unequivocally evident that Caltrans' lack of action has repeatedly disappointed our community. Their failure to implement medians and turning lanes has resulted in this heart-wrenching incident. I commend our civic leaders such as Mayor Doug Stewart and others for all their efforts to bring about change in Sacramento through the bills proposed by Senator Allen, Stern, and Weiner. However, legislative process takes time, and lives are currently in danger. Therefore, when Caltrans meets this Thursday, our voices mustn't be silenced. Our unity is our strength. We understand that advanced infrastructure has potential to save lives, as evidenced by another segment of PCH by John Triler. We must insist on safety measures that we deserve. We owe it to the memories of those we have lost and the lives we can protect. Silence is not an option. We need action, not just studies, but actual tangible results. This is not merely about assigning blame, but charting a path forward. Let us channel our indignation into action. Let us ensure that Caltrans hears our voices and perceives our determination. Together, we can transform PCH into a safer, thoroughfare for all. The time for change is now. We must insist upon it and not be silenced until we witness palatable results. 61 lives lost. How many more until we kindle outrage? The answer is none. We have endured enough, and it is our moral obligation to make our city's streets safe, even if that city's street is PCH. Thanks.
Thank you, Michelle. Howard Rutske, you're next, and then Norm Haney.
Good evening. First, thanks to Steve for all he did serving, and congratulations to Doug. A lot of people asked me to come here tonight to thank Richard Malika. I don't believe most people realize what we really lost. Everything goes through planning, if you want to park, if you want the highway safer, if you want a coastal, anything, and the list goes on. So on behalf of myself and a lot of people, we really want to thank Richard and wish him all the best. Second thing is, I want to give a shout out to Alicia Peak. Wow, she did an amazing job. She took over the parade at Point Dume with a few weeks' notice. Everyone thought it was going to die. She got 600 or 700 people to come. She got Brad Sherman to come and showed him why we need help with the schools. Wow, what a lady. That's what citizens need to be like. She's amazing. And last, I'd like to thank Lieutenant Soderland, like usual. I texted him, we had some idiots try to burn down our neighborhood on Fourth of July. He responded right away. So thank you very much. Have a great evening and good luck, Doug.
Thank you, Howard. Next up, Norm Haney. Then on deck will be Ryan Embry.
Good evening, City Council members. First, I want to thank Steve Euring for not just his time as city... on the City Council, but also his time on the Planning Commission. He's worked incredibly hard to benefit the people in Malibu, and I have nothing but respect for him. When he was mayor, he demanded, "I just want to know the truth. I want to know all the details." I don't know why I can't understand what's going on. I won't make a decision until I know everything and I'm able to make that decision wisely. And it was his demand that got people to listen and to hunt for the truth and to provide that truth not just to him, but to the citizens. Second, I want to thank Doug Stewart. He has a great deal of knowledge, common sense, reasonable. He can thread the needle. He can do the right things for the City of Malibu, and I'm positive that he will do that. He's already shown that as a council member, and many of the things that he was able to do has saved the city a great deal of money. Finally, Richard Malika. I can't say enough about his hard work and his decision-making ability. It's not easy to be the Director of Planning, and he has been for many years. And we have lost a great asset to the city. All three of the people that I've mentioned have spent a substantial amount of their life to make the city a better place, and I want to thank you from the bottom of my heart. Thank you.
Thank you, Norm. All right, Ryan Embry next, please, and then the next speaker or something I have is Josh Spiegel.
I want to say thank you very much to Steve Euring for his term as mayor, and congratulations to Doug Stewart, and very much a thank you for all of the years that Richard Malika has given to the City of Malibu. I mean, getting a phone call at 6:00 or 6:30 at night, and it's Richard explaining something that is important, that needed an answer, and rather than, you know, type at 50 words a minute, you can speak at 400 words a minute, and, you know, that's incredible service to the city. He's continued that incredible service to the city. We've had some great employees in that department as well, and I hope maybe some of them can help through this transition. I wanted to be very clear about some of the problems that we've been having on Pacific Coast Highway and all of the work and focus that we've been doing and for this bit of a fiasco of the permitting problem. And I know you can't talk about it, but I can. And that is that we have to work with Caltrans. One of the proposals was that the restaurant that apparently did an exclusive to have a free-flowing alcohol event on July 4th, which is really Malibu's worst day of the year, and to take away public parking off of Pacific Coast Highway so they could have a pickup and a drop-off zone, that did not have Caltrans approval. And it was correct for our Public Works Director not to approve that permit. The conditions were not appropriate. Yet that party event occurred anyway. And, you know, the guy says, somebody said, "The mayor attorney, and we're going to sue you probably." And I go, "Well, that'd be very interesting," because if you look at the six conditions for holding a... getting a TUP permit from this city, all six of them were violated. Off-site advertising, outdoor setup and activities not in the footprint of the restaurant, change in the... taken parking away, and they didn't even have enough to begin with. So that's very concerning, and we'll find out later if there's further tragedy from this restaurateur who, I guess, they pimped out their restaurant for one day, and look what happened. There was the wisdom of you five council members to not approve a four-story hotel with a party deck and a bar on the roof across from Malibu Pier just last month, and that was the correct decision. Thank you.
Thank you, Ryan. Josh, you're up next, please, and followed by Skylar Peak.
Hi, everyone. First, I'd like to thank Steve for your service as mayor. That's awesome. Thank you very much for doing that. Congratulations, Doug. That's a huge honor, and thank you for... thank you, Sharon, for lending Doug to Malibu.
She doesn't want me back, by the way.
I bet. I'd also like to thank Richard. Disappointed he left before I could show his wife. Oh, is your wife still here? I have a picture of senior yearbook with the Afro. Can't wait to show her, but I came up here to talk about what happened over the weekend, and I'm not going to get into the minutia, but I'm aware this is a code enforcement case. We have over 800 code enforcement cases in Malibu. I don't think that it goes far enough. Our inability to shut something down that's clearly a safety issue, something that's clearly going to lead to something bigger, needs to be fixed. And it's not just Nobu. There's other things in Malibu. The sunset, which we've talked about ad nauseam during your time on public safety, is another one. We had issues with moon shadows. And, look, 10 years from now, who knows what it's going to be? If it's not Nobu, if... it could be any number of things, but we need to have that mechanism. We need to have that tool in place. And I have a feeling that you all are going to sit down and try and figure out what we can do. If we identify something, we can shut it down, because having something as a code enforcement case where an operator is going to continue to operate while planning figures it out or the courts figure it out or whatever is not a tenable situation for us. So I just wanted to remind you that it's not just Nobu. It's... there's a whole lot of other things that we need to apply this to. So I just wanted to remind you of that, and again, thank you very much for your service. Thanks.
Thank you, Josh. Skylar, you're up next.
Hey, Doug. How's it going, Mayor Stewart? I just wanted to first thank all of you guys for your service, and I really wanted to... I think I heard Howard earlier say something in the... thanking my sister. So Alicia, if you're out there listening, thank you very much. You put a lot of smiles on a lot of people's faces for the Fourth of July. It was a really cool community event. Just wanted to also thank Ashton Bridges and all the other volunteers from CERT that came out to make that happen. That was a really positive community event. And, Richard, as one of the members of your Planning Commission, you will be deeply missed. You are amazing. You are a vital and have been an amazing asset to the city. You were amazing when I was on the City Council. And I wish you the best wherever it may lead you, but as I think Steve said earlier, very big shoes to feel. So I just really wanted to thank you and the rest of our staff, who all kick ass. So you guys keep doing what you're doing. You do a great job. I hope that the council as a whole continues to press on with the stuff for making our highway safer and, you know, take the recommendations that you get from your public safety very seriously, and I think there's a lot more things we can do to make our community safer as a whole. To me, the Fourth of July this year felt a little bit quiet, didn't go without a tragedy on the highway, which was horrible. Every single additional one of those is just not acceptable, as Mr. Shane said earlier this evening. We need to do better, and hopefully we can work with the state to make that happen. Thank you.
Thank you, Skylar. No other slips?
Mayor, I had a note that I believe you may have had speaker slips from Merrill May and Jefferson Wagner as well.
I do? Well, let's bring up Merrill.
Hello, council and staff. My name is Merrill May. I've been here before. I was on the Planning Commission at one time. I'm on the PCH Safety Task Force. I'll dovetail on to ex-Mayor Euring's comments about being thankful about living here and the responsibility for doing so. I'm going to mention a bunch of things tonight, but the main thing is an appeal to people to report things to get fixed. I mean, everybody knows I write a lot of emails to you all and to Caltrans and the sheriffs, but when you see a pothole, when you see a sign-down, when you see fires, whatever it is, report it. Public Works is fantastic. Rob DeBeau's doing a great job over there. Sheriffs are doing a great job. It's nice to have CHP back on board, but everybody has to report things. I mean, if I see a... today I reported numerous things. Last weekend, I was walking down in Zuma, and there's seven fixed restrooms in Zuma. Two and a half were open. 100,000 people at the beach, so they have 30 porta-potties. So I called up the supervisor, I emailed the supervisor, and she got some extra porta-potties down for the weekend at Westwood Beach and Zuma Beach. They're gone now, but the other restrooms are still under construction. So there needs to be a little bit better interface with the city and with beaches and harbors and with the county. Let's go back to the underpass at Zuma. When that's closed, traffic backed up a few weekends ago past Zumaraz because the traffic can't get off PCH. So you've got PCH knowingly on hot days. Traffic is going to back up on PCH from the turnpocket at the Zuma entrance past Zumaraz because that's still closed. I'm working with the supervisor again to try to get some speed on that. Somebody's done some work, but again, nothing's going on with that. So that's another issue that we know it exists, but it still isn't done. The one thing that can get done immediately, and I brought this up when one of the last fatalities happened, was to get more presence on the highway. More sheriffs. The CHP is on the job now. I mean, there's long-term things, the cameras, that's great, but the short-term things is if there's more sheriffs, and I don't know where we get the money to get more sheriffs because I know there's a problem, a staffing problem, and I appreciate everything every sheriff does, and your department, Jen, but if we can get some more money to put more people on the road. I hear people racing down PCH in the middle of the night. Motorcycle went by me at 120 miles an hour the other day. I had a guy pass up a double-yellow line through traffic. So maybe we need to have four people, four units, on the road all the time, 24 hours a day, and just make it known that this is a place not to speed through it or be reckless. I mean, we can do that tomorrow if we could get the money or find the personnel to do that. Let me just mention one other thing. I ran into one of the VOPs the other day, and there was two cars in use last weekend, and we have 20 VOPs, I think. So maybe we could figure out a way to get some more vehicles for our VOPs to put on the road to use enforcement.
Thank you, Merrill.
I'll send you some emails.
And he does send emails. Jefferson? Sorry, I missed you too, by the way.
It's your first day, so there's a... it's a fair moment. Well, thank you very much. Welcome to your position now and fellow neighbor. I want to thank the full council for their time and effort on behalf of the citizens of Malibu. You've done your best jobs, whether you agree or you disagree. Somehow, you do pull it off, and in hindsight, I did it a couple of times, and we managed to plug through, and I do appreciate all your effort from all of you. Two topics quickly. I did send in some pictures prior to 12 o'clock to Parker. I have a retail business directly across from the Nobu Riacon, Soho House, and Nobu Restaurant. These pictures were taken this morning at about 10:30-ish. Don't hold me to the exact moment. You can see the litter that's been collected there. This litter is from the limousine drivers who drove the patrons to the party individually, and the limousine drivers were not allowed into the McDonald's parking lot. McDonald's had professional signs made sending them elsewhere, so they parked upon the highway wherever they could. A number of traffic enforcement officers in the area, including the VOPs. There were two across the street from 3 o'clock when I started taking pictures, and I sent them to Hans for the KABU announcement about this event. You can see this is the remnants of Fourth of July right across from Nobu. So I encourage you to follow up and make the proper decisions to defend the citizens of Malibu and the other businesses that exist near Nobu, and I'm sure that it's on your plate, and that's why I'm putting this in front. The second topic is to, there's the other picture right across from Nobu, I'm about 100 yards away, is to Captain C2 and Sergeant. We have the continued parking problem at Corral Beach. Now, I know Doug, Mary Ann, all drive by that on your way home every day when you come to work or City Hall. There are seven continuous motorhomes parked there. Last night, I took a time off and pulled over, and I noticed that one motorhome, the ARR BUS Motorhome, I'll be quick, has actually built a fence between his motorhome and the rocks to keep his dog in there. That's denying the general public access to the beach. Those seven motorhomes have been there for more than a month, and I know Jen's aware of it. We just need to have some deputies or VOPs start citing. I know it's difficult for them to cite when somebody doesn't answer the door when the sheriff knocks. You can still put the site on the unit. I really encourage you to act on that. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jake. All right, now that I've, now that I've got all the slips done, do we have anyone online?
There are three hands versus Tim Boswell.
All right, Tim, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you for the time. I'm reading the first part of a letter dated June 24, 2024 by Assistant Planning Director Adrian Fernandez. Dear City Council Members, I'm writing to you as a colleague and employee to finally raise the curtain on abuses and collusion that I have both witnessed and personally endured within the city of Malibu. The last six weeks have been a private hell for me and my family, and I've experienced death threats, personal public attacks, and private verbal abuse from many sides. I have now come to the alarming realization that officials at the highest level of city government, including the mayor, coordinated or at a minimum encouraged these attacks in concert with members of the Malibu Township Council. City officials and MTC have launched relentless attacks on me and other employees who are just trying to do our jobs as best we can, and we are suffering extreme consequences. The individuals involved in this conspiracy include Mayor Steve Euring, Councilmember Bruce Silverstein, Planning Commissioners John Mazza and Craig Hill, the Public Works Commissioner Joe Drummond, in concert with various members of the MTC. The most recent campaign of coordinated abuse culminated at the May 13, 2024, City Council meeting, where I was repeatedly harassed by members of the MTC and their associates. With the encouragement of the mayor and other council members, the timeline reveals the impermissible connections between MTC and city officials, as well as their abusive conduct. Prior to the May 13 meeting, MTC sent an email with inflammatory rhetoric and imagery to thousands of people, riling them up and encouraging them to show up and speak against a project that MTC, Bruce Silverstein, Steve Euring, John Mazza, Craig Hill, and Joe Drummond did not want to pass. It implies that somehow I bent the rules for profit. Two to three hours before the May 13 meeting regarding the project, Mayor Euring called and used expletives to express his displeasure. He angrily threatened me that he would make an example out of the planning department at the meeting for recommending approval of the project. At the meeting, a mob of mostly angry MTC board members and other people affiliated to the MTC showed up to mock and threaten me. The employee who simply worked on an assigned project in the course of my job did the best of my ability. The mob cheered and laughed whenever I was berated by the council members and public speakers, with Mayor Euring and Councilmember Silverstein smiling at the reaction of the crowd. Most egregiously, during recess at the May 13 meeting, Kurt Cam, a neighbor of Mayor Euring and Councilmember Silverstein, called me a weasel and a scumbag, and then told me he wanted to see the planning department put in graves. Immediately after, Mr. Cam insulted and threatened me. I saw Mr. Cam talking with Mayor Euring up by the DS, smiling about how, what just happened. I was alarmed and frightened, and immediately asked city officials for support, but I received none. Mr. Cam then publicly attacked me in front of the cheering MTC crowd and the public watching on video. Mr. Cam dismissed my ability to adequately perform my job because I was not a Malibu resident.
Thank you, Mr. Boswell. Who's next, please?
Roxanne.
Roxanne, go ahead, please.
Hi, this is Roxanne. I'm going to continue the letter from Mr. Fernandez. Two days after the May 13 meeting, attacking emails from MTC members came pouring into the city with my email address on copy. Councilmember Silverstein agreed that other MTC members who demanded my termination. Councilmember Silverstein said, Silverstein said, "Some members of the planning staff should be subjected to a critical internal review and terminated if they do not alter their approach to commercial development." Jay Floes demanded my termination and stated, "Enough already. We are done. 99.9% of staff does not live here. This is broken. The attack is saying that I am not from around here, raises discriminatory undertones of my race and socioeconomic status aims to belittle me." On May 23, 2024, The Malibu Times ran a story where MTC members were accusing me of collusion with a developer and council member Paul Grisanti and demanding an internal investigation. This idea of an internal investigation was suggested several times by MTC members and councilmembers Silverstein during the May 13 meeting. At the next two city council meetings, on May 28 and June 10, in 2024, more MTC board members spoke during public comments to verbally attack me while I was on medical leave, and the attacks on June 10 were made with full notice that I was on leave. During the June 10 meeting, councilmember Silverstein proclaimed publicly that I was on leave, a clear violation of my rights to privacy. He ridiculed and minimized the mental health impacts that I was suffering. Councilmember Silverstein belittled the death threats that I had received. No one did anything to stop the public speakers or city officials from the continued attacks on me at the meeting. Councilmember Silverstein read a letter from Monty Gordon negating any mistreatments or attacks against me and creating an alternate reality. Councilmember Silverstein also read uncorroborated and extremely prejudicial emails about me written by residents. On May 30, 2024, when I wrote a letter to Mayor Euring, Mayor Euring, to address untrue statements he made in the May 28 meeting and to explain the terrible things that were happening to me, rather than respond, to respond with support or at a minimum a promise to investigate the abuses, my access to city systems were cut off, and I was told never to email Mayor Euring directly again. The connections among the attacks are evident. Mayor Steven Euring and Planning Commissioner John Mazza are both former presidents of MTC. The current MTC president, Joe Drummond, was appointed to Public Works Commission by Councilmember Silverstein. Many of the attacks from the May 13 meeting and other meetings since are MTC board members. Kurt Cam, who delivered public attacks and a private death threat to the next-door neighbor of Mayor Euring, and Councilmember Silverstein. In short, MTC is colluding with the city council to attack city employees who dare to do-
Roxanne, thank you. Your time is up. All right, do we have anyone else on Zoom?
There's three more hands. First is Bill Sampson.
Bill Sampson, go ahead, please.
Thank you. First, Steve, thank you so much. Doug, good luck. This last weekend was obviously very troubling to all of us. I read some troubling things that I don't know if they're true or not. One of them was that a source told Hans Letts, according to a post of his that was forwarded to me, that they weren't the party police. Well, I don't know who is supposed to police out-of-control parties, but somebody should. I hope you guys will look into that. And Richard, good luck to you. I didn't know you were an intern in 1996. So was Rosemary, my wife. She was an intern then. She never got an interview when she started applying for jobs. That's not your fault, but it's something to think about. She'd probably been right behind you, maybe even in front of you, I don't know. But it's very difficult for residents here to get jobs with the city. I know Mary Ann did, but there have been very, very few. And if anybody thinks they're more qualified than my wife, I'll be happy to meet you outside. She's smarter than anyone's. One of my past problems, this is not simple for me, dealt with alcohol. I had my own battles with it. I'm happy to say they ended on Bastille Day in 1978. It's one of the reasons I may rant about it, but I'm going to rant about it now. Thursday, at what I would call not Boo, booze was being given away with stuff that I, as a retired professional, had never heard of, probably because I couldn't afford it. But they were giving it in massive quantities of it away at $10,000 to $75,000 tables. The inevitable occurred. You put booze in people and then put them on our highway, we're going to continue to die out here. My heart goes out to the family of the fella driving the Cadillac. I'm sorry, I don't know his name. I think Doug announced it earlier. And a moment of silence just ain't enough. Yeah, thoughts and prayers aren't going to do it. Several of you have appointed planning commissioners who are going to hear next week two more applications for conditional use permits for alcoholic beverages to be poured into drivers on our road. You may not want to directly supervise your commissioners, but do pay attention. If they keep putting booze in drivers on our roads, the result is inevitable. Let's not do that. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. Who's next, please?
Dan.
Dan, go ahead, please.
Hi, I'd like to finish that letter by Adrian Fernandez. My experience is not singular, and in fact, the workplace dysfunction and culture in the city of Malibu was the subject of a recent report by Baker Tilly US LOP, determined that employees are not willing to work for the city due to the difficult work environment, which includes unmanageable workload, controversy, too many criticisms of staff, lack of support of the organization and its leaders, inadequate decorum, rules, and practices. The result is a chaotic and dysfunctional workplace. It has become clear to me that MTC and its backers in city government want this chaos and dysfunction to continue so that they can manipulate the system without being held accountable. Anyone that pushes back against MTC and its members will feel the wrath in investigations, verbal abuse, and more. The MTC, it's, the MTC and its city co-conspirators do not want to have properly-staffed city with competent staff because it limits their power. Although the mayor and Bruce hold a minority position in the city council, along with Commissioner Mazza and Hill on the planning commission, they yield immense power through coordinated attacks with MTC. MTC emails, next-door postings, staged public speakers, arranged angry mobs are all employed to drive decisions from planning projects, staged code enforcement actions, and most acts in the city. An official employee or resident defy their goals, they will be threatened and attacked, investigated, appealed, publicly harassed, retaliated against, embarrassed. This conduct by the, by the city violates many aspects of California's employment and governance laws and must be stopped. I would hope that someone, maybe the new mayor, would look deeper into the MTC to investigate its strong connection on the city's dysfunction and staff intimidation. Unfortunately, the adverse effects of planning staff are likely irreversible, and many are afraid to face the planning commission and city council. Many staff are currently looking to leave such an abusive workplace. The group and individual therapy provided by the city are not enough to help planning staff cope with the traumatic effects of constant attacks and abuse. No one deserves to suffer like I have, and it is time for the employees and residents of Malibu to demand transparent, lawful governance free from abuse and corruption. Sincerely, Adrian Fernandez.
Thank you, Dan. Next speaker, please.
Joe Drummond.
Joe, go ahead.
Hi, congratulations, outgoing Mayor Steve Euring and incoming Mayor Doug Stewart. I'm here as Malibu Township Council's president on behalf of the Board of Directors to respond to this, to this. Malibu Township Council denies all claims in the June 24, 2024, letter by a city staff member in connection with our appeal to the Malibu Inn Hotel. Malibu Township Council appealed the planning commission's majority approval of this project to the city council, since, as designed, it did not adhere to Malibu's general plan, local coastal program, and municipal code. Our presentation was professional and respectful. We will continue to speak for and against development in the ongoing public interest based on each proposal's merits and Malibu's codes that were put in place to protect Malibu's unique, fragile natural environment and our small seaside community character. MTC's appeal was granted on its merits by the city council with only one dissenting vote. Malibu Township Council has been a watchdog for Malibu, advocating for responsible development to protect this most special place since 1947. We have, over the past 77 years, received the respect of the citizens of Malibu and asked for the city government's respect. Over the decades, MTC has championed the preservation of Malibu and permitted a nuclear power plant, oil drilling, a freeway, a marina, a citywide sewer system, large four-or-more axle trucks on PCH, and other attempts to exploit Malibu with inappropriate development. It was MTC that spearheaded formation of the Malibu Committee for Incorporation that successfully enabled the city of Malibu. Our mission statement says, "Established to promote, stimulate, and further community spirit to sponsor any project of merit that may benefit any district of Malibu Township to foster and promote the cultural development of the township, and in general, to do all things that tend to build and uphold the character of this residential area." This is from our Articles of Incorporation, January 2, 1947. And I am, I believe, the first minority president of Malibu Township Council. Thank you.
Thank you, Joe. Do we have anyone else?
Those are all the raised hands.
There are no other speaker slips?
No more speaker slips or raised hands, but we will have a commission report when you're ready for it.
All right. Public comments are closed. With that-
Yes, we have a commission report on Zoom from Joe Drummond for the Public Works Commission.
Thank you. Go ahead, Joe.
Okay, and again, congratulations. We appreciate all your work upholding Malibu's vision and mission statement. The Public Safety and Public Works Commissions met last week for a presentation from Caltrans to give input on the PCH master plan. And given the recent tragedy on PCH, it is very important for Malibu residents to give their input on the PCH master plan feasibility study that Caltrans will be holding. Two will be in person, one this Thursday, July 11, and the other on Wednesday, August 28, from 6:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. at Malibu City Hall. There will be no remote participation for these. And then one virtual on Thursday, July 18, from 1:00 p.m. to 4:00 p.m., where you can sign up at the city's website for alerts or by searching PCH Master Plan Study. One solution could be to put in a median in that location by Carbon Beach and PCH to help in dangerous situations from U-turns and crossing over medians. The downside is limiting emergency vehicles and drivers being inconvenienced, not being able to turn left over the safety of the highway. But if people obey the traffic laws and create a proper boulevard in that location where it is safer for pedestrians and oncoming traffic, that should be an important factor in the redesign. So we hope all residents can attend in some way any one of these workshops to give input. There have already been suggestions of removing parking on one side of PCH and increasing it on the other side so that there can be a protected two-way bike lane from Topanga to Malibu High School, at the very least so students can bike to school in an hour, et cetera. This is a chance for all residents to make a difference in the redesign of PCH all the way from one end of Malibu, from Tuner Canyon to Ventura County Line. Also, the signal synchronization that has been happening on PCH slowing down traffic should be done in the busy section of town in the next few weeks, so traffic should be flowing normally in August, we hope. As we stated at the last update, the entire project is projected to be finished by the end of this year, and thank you very much.
Thank you, Joe. There's no other committee or commission reports?
No, you don't have any other commissioner or committee reports.
All right, time for the city manager update.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. For my report, happy to report that the LAZ Parking Team began parking enforcement on July 3. This is the private company that the city just began contracting with, the, excuse me, the beginning of this fiscal year for added parking enforcement. Excuse me. Although they are still in the recruitment process for hiring the permanent Malibu team, the field supervisor and training supervisor for that team stepped in to help us out over the July 4 holiday weekend and to learn more about the specifics of parking issues in Malibu. They worked very closely with our Volunteers on Patrol team leader over the weekend, and they issued 567 citations for illegally parked cars, so pretty good start, I think. Towing procedures are being worked out and coordinated with the Sheriff's Department, so that capability should be in place soon. So we look forward to having their full team on board. Good start, I think, for the parking enforcement team. As it was noted earlier, we're continuing to move forward and making good progress with the speed camera, that legislation, SB 1297, co-sponsored by Senator Allen and Assembly Member Irwin- As it was noted earlier, we're continuing to move forward and making good progress with the speed camera, that legislation, SB 1297, co-sponsored by Senator Allen and Assemblymember Irwin, has now made it through another critical step to get to ultimately passage. Got through the Privacy and Protection Committee last week. Thank you to Mayor Protam Alexis Brown for going up to Sacramento and making sure that that got through. We do have one other committee to get through, which is appropriations. We don't expect that to be a hurdle. That will come back. The legislature is now in their summer recess, so they will pick that up when they come back in August. So that will then, once it gets through appropriations, we expect it will go to the Assembly floor. We expect that it will get support there as well. Of course, we don't know for sure, but so far, all indications are looking good. Also, the other bill that we've been closely tracking, the negligent operator treatment bill that was authored by Senator Stern, also got out of the committee yesterday and will be heading, I believe, also to appropriations before going to the floor vote, again, also in August. So those votes are, those bills are moving forward, and we'll continue to track those and let you know as there's any new developments. Also, I wanted to thank everybody who came out last week to participate, excuse me, two weeks ago, to participate for our launch of the Pacific Coast Highway Safety Education and Awareness Campaign, our Cruise Malibu Sand Surf Slow. Thank you to everybody in the community who's helped to work on that and put that together. And if you haven't had a chance to catch any of the PSAs or pick up license plate frame or any of the other good stuff that we've got, it's a good way to get the word out to encourage people to slow down on PCH. I wanted to thank Commissioner Drummond. I think she mentioned quite well the workshops that are going to be coming up regarding the PCH master plan. Again, the two in-person public workshops will take place July 11 and August 28 from 6 to 8 p.m., and there will be a virtual public workshop that takes place July 18 from 1 to 4 p.m. The in-person meetings will be held here at Malibu City Hall, but that will be an opportunity, again, for persons to share their opinions and views and get an idea and really see what Caltrans is proposing for PCH here in Malibu. So that's going to be very exciting. Also, just a reminder that the city council will be dark for its next regular meeting as part of the council's annual summer recess. Our next regular meeting will be Monday, August 12. For events that I attended, I participated in a mediation session last week for the school separation and also last Friday in the monthly business roundtable meeting hosted by the Malibu Times. And that is it for my report. I'd happy to take any questions from the mayor and council. And additionally, I do have Captain C2 here from the Sheriff's Department to give a report as well.
Any questions to the city manager? I have one point I'd like to make. I think Jay Wagner was talking about the overnight parking issues on PCH. I know we don't have full staffing yet for the contract parking people, but I understand it's overnight is part of their contract. And I can tell you, my public safety days to midnight to 4 a.m. is the ripe time to go get those guys. So please put them on the list as soon as you can.
As soon as we get them up, we'll let you know. Excuse me.
By the way, just so you know, for the decorum, it's one thing when we have somebody being awarded a certificate or something, but we are going to try and keep the applause and the cheers and all down going forward. It's part of our resolution from 1998, and Jay back there is doing the jazz wave. That's fine to do, but it's in the spirit of making sure that everybody feels like they can speak freely.
Mr. Mayor, may I make a comment about the overnight parking issue?
Certainly, go ahead.
I was going to make it later, but since you raised it appropriate, I wonder, Kelsey, if we could put the picture up that I sent earlier? So I've been talking about this for years. We finally got clearance from the U.S. Supreme Court to enforce our camping law, which has always been lawful, but the Ninth Circuit wrongly determined for five years it was unconstitutional. Overnight camping in vehicles is not simply a parking issue. It violates our camping law, which has been on the books for many, many years. I have a question for the city manager. Are those signs still up?
Are these signs still up?
Yes.
I'm not even sure what location this is. Be happy to check.
Rob is indicating, yes, they are still up. So I mean, I would encourage the Sheriff's Department to consider enforcing our camping law, not simply parking laws. It's a much more serious issue. You'd simply do not have the right to sleep in a camper overnight in the city of Malibu, nor do you, for that matter, have that right almost in any city in the state. For five years, the Ninth Circuit wrongfully interfered with the enforcement of that law. It's now enforceable. Thanks.
Thank you. All right, anybody else? All right, Captain C2. And Sergeant Sutherland. I know you got a promotion there for a moment, but you have to give the gold bars back.
And let me tell you, he deserves a promotion. So just want to talk a little bit about July 4. So on July 4, at approximately 10:17 p.m., Malibu Lost Hills stations deputies responded to a traffic collision on PCH in Carbon Canyon Road, city of Malibu. A preliminary investigation revealed that a 2019 Mercedes-Benz traveling eastbound on PCH crossed the center median and, for unknown reasons, collided head-on with a 2020 Cadillac traveling westbound. As a result of the collision, the driver of the Cadillac succumbed to his injuries. The passenger of the Cadillac and the driver of the Mercedes-Benz were transported to a local hospital and treated for non-life-threatening injuries. This investigation is ongoing, and I understand everybody wants answers, right? Everybody wants to go on Nextdoor, Facebook, any other social media, and be the first to have answers. But an investigation takes time. And just today, we obtained, our investigators were on it, we obtained signatures on search warrants, multiple search warrants. The detectives are diligently out there from the second that it happened to, all over the weekend. They have been talking to the DA's office, they've been doing their investigation. So I understand that we all want answers. We are going to look at this from A to Z. We're going to look at, was it, did alcohol play a factor? Did speeds play a factor? Did distracting driving play a factor? All these things we are going to look at. But one thing that we can't do is we can't go to the DA's office for filing of rumors, right? We have to have clear, concrete evidence. And I promise you this, that that's exactly what our investigators are doing right now. So I do really appreciate your patience. I get that. I wish it was like TV and we could have this wrapped up in 60 minutes with an answer, but that's not how we do things. And so I do really thank you for your patience. One thing I do want to talk about is whether it's, you know, West Lake, Calabasas, you know, we do have many locations that serve alcohol. And as my staff and I kind of came together, you know, are we doing everything that we can? You know, we talked about, council member, we worked on speed for a lot, right? But are we really doing everything we can about intoxication, right? My friend Kim was killed on PCH and right in front of the pier, 1997, and it was for DUI. And so really, are we doing everything that we can? And something that recently one of the sergeants and one of the lieutenants mentioned was these cafe cards. They're called cafe incidents cards, and we've used these in West Hollywood, and we also use these successfully in Lancaster. And what this does is if we pull over someone that's intoxicated, that's had way too much to drink, we actually do research and find out where they've come from. And then we work with ABC Alcohol and Beverage Control, and then we start looking at things differently. So this is a program that we will be running at the Malibu Lost Hills Sheriff's Station. We've ordered many of these cafe incidents cards to really look at this problem from a different perspective. So I'm open to any questions. I just will say that this is an ongoing investigation, and we want to make sure that this investigation, the integrity of this investigation is right there and complete. So I'm very cautious of what answers I can give you. I will say, public, if you know anything, see anything, if you have any video, please call the Malibu Lost Hills station. We need your help in investigating this. We need everybody's help in this. So any questions that I can answer for you?
Paul, go ahead.
Thank you for coming today. Can you elaborate on the cafe incident cards? Are those, and what are they, are they trying to identify places that habitually overserve, for example?
Yes, so that's what, we're looking for trends, right? If, let's just say, we see there's Jack's Market, and every time we pull somebody over, they're coming from Jack's Market. The deputies were starting filling out these, it's going to actually go to a certain lieutenant, and the lieutenant will work with Alcohol and Beverage Control, ABC, and they start looking at their license, taking away their license. So this is something that we have just started. I have a card, and we're ordering more. So yes, we look at the institutions and kind of go from there.
Anyone else? Bruce, go ahead.
Yes, it's been reported, quote, "Sources at the Malibu Lost Hills Sheriff's Department indicate they were aware that an illegal party was to be held July 4 at Nobu, but, quote, 'we are not the party police,' close quote, and said such an illegal activity would fall under the civilian staff at the city of Malibu to deal with afterward." Is that an accurate description of the Sheriff's Department's policy?
That is, actually, we are a party police. We do go to parties quite often, so we are party police. When it comes to TUPs and CUPs and understanding, so a lot of the, a lot of illegal parties that we have are in the county area at homes. And so what our protocol is, is we look, we take pictures, we document, we report, and then we work with, usually it's county council, the county's council, the board of supervisors, and start looking at ways to go after that, for that institution to go after that house. So that's kind of with a party, and for us to determine whether it violated a TUP or CUP, that is not what law enforcement exactly does. That's really the code enforcement. We are not experts on that.
Hadn't the city met with you all and told you there was no permit for this party? It's not a question of whether the terms of the TUP, it's a question that there was no TUP.
Well, we can have a, I'm not going to go into everything. There's a longer discussion that I'm happy to have with the city manager, but I've gotten, yes, yes, we were aware that, that it was the, that there was a, there wasn't a TUP, but it could possibly didn't violate their CUP. So it was, we heard a bunch of different things. I'm happy to have some more conversations. I think we wanted to kind of keep it brief as there is an investigation going on, but I'm happy to provide any information that we have with the investigation.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Steve?
I want to thank you for the effort on the alcohol. I mean, that's a big one that's going to get worse and worse, so if we can help you today with that effort, please let us know. Thank you.
Thank you. And former mayor, Steve Euring, we actually do have a scroll, but the department, I think we thought it was going to be at the end of the year. So my apology, but we do have something for you, and just, it really has been a, what a, what a year, right? What a year it's been. And I just, I really do want to thank you from the bottom of my heart for working with us on speed and coming together, and that's how we actually get things done, is when we all come together, shoulder to shoulder. And to actually see 1297 pass the assembly, it was just like this, like, oh my gosh, we, this is actually going to happen.
We did it.
Hey, we did it. And I don't want to, but it really, one of the greatest things in my career is looking at that and saying, oh my gosh, I think we actually had an impact. I think we actually saved lives. So thank you so much for your leadership. I really do appreciate that.
Same thing going back at you. Thank you.
Thank you, and we do have a scroll for you. Any other questions?
Anybody else? I'd like to just make one remark here. The criticality of this Nobu incident is not lost on anybody on the dais, as well as all of our public reaching out to us about what's going on there. I really appreciate you making the time to come see us. You have a busy schedule. You know, we have 20 square miles, and you've got the whole west end of Los Angeles County. So thank you for making the time and bringing us up to date on it. And I know from my conversations with Sergeant Ehrens about other investigations, these do need to be detailed. We have one shot to get it right, and the defense for whoever gets prosecuted on it has weeks, months, maybe years to try and take it apart. So I appreciate the diligence that you're doing.
Thank you. Yes, I wouldn't miss this meeting. I really do appreciate that, and thank you, and congratulations.
All right. Sergeant? Come on, guys. By the way, I would love for Sergeant Sutherland to be promoted as well, but we're losing. So in deference to the fact that you're very eligible for a promotion, you can't go.
Thank you. It's above my pay grade, but thank you. I'll be quick. I have the crime statistics for June, so that's going to be the first half of 2024. We're already halfway through 2024, believe it or not. So in June, there were 47 Part I crimes for a total of 206 for the year 2024 through June. This compares with 219 for the same time last year in 2023, so that's a 6.3% drop year over year. So that's a good sign. We're still trending downwards. A couple of highlights here, and you'll see a common theme here. A male transient was arrested for residential burglary on De Ville Way. A male transient was arrested for theft of utilities and possession of a controlled substance on Civic Center Way. A male transient was arrested for assault with a deadly weapon and making criminal threats after attempting to assault an employee in the 2300 block of PCH. And a male transient was arrested for recklessly and unlawfully causing a fire with a blowtorch at Westward Beach Road and Zumbe Way. Finally, I'm giving you one of the highlights of the Malibu Special Assignment deputies that Malibu pays for. So on June 28, which was a Friday, at approximately 1:30 a.m., deputies were patrolling PCH when they observed a Toyota Prius with multiple vehicle code violations. They conducted a traffic stop on that vehicle, and while talking to the driver, they observed in plain view drug paraphernalia. During a search of the vehicle, they recovered multiple narcotics and plastic baggies and a scale inside the vehicle. Parker, if you can show the picture. So that's all they recovered from the vehicle, and they were able to arrest the suspect for possession of illicit narcotics with the intent to sell and distribute. So some good work that the deputies are doing out there. It looks like a 7-Eleven for narcotics. Finally, on July 3, deputies received a call on Malibu Canyon and Mesa Tractor Park Mountain Way, which is near the Payuma Road and Backbone Trailhead, of hikers who discovered a dog in a ravine with zip ties around its muzzle and around its neck. You can see a picture here. Deputies responded along with search and rescue and animal control, and were able to rescue the dog from the ravine and get the zip ties off. That dog is recovering at Animal Shelter in Agora Hills, and we were asking if anybody saw anybody drop a dog off in that area around Malibu Canyon or Payuma, please contact the Lost Hills Sheriff's Station or LA County Animal Control as they are leading the investigation in this animal abuse case. But fortunately, we were able to rescue the dog, and I can report that he is doing quite well.
All right. Anybody have any questions? Go ahead.
Do you have any preliminary accounts of the amount of people that visited Malibu this weekend? I know it's super early, but...
I don't, but it was packed.
And I believe there was another accident at Bonzel Bush Area, is that correct?
Westward Beach Road in PCH, car flipped over, trying to turn onto PCH. It was struck and overturned, but fortunately, nobody was injured.
Good to hear. Thank you.
All right. With that, thank you very much. With that, thank you very much, Sergeant. We appreciate you coming.
Thank you.
Bring us up to date. All right. With that, we'll bring it up here to the dais. Let's not start in any particular order. We get used to that over time. So who would like to go first? Bruce?
I'm happy to go first. There's only one thing that I intended to speak about tonight, and we've been admonished not to, which is the Nobu party. But notwithstanding the admonition, I'm going to say, I've already publicly commented on this multiple times on social media. If this ever gets to the city council, and if I'm still on city council, I'll consider at that time whether there are reasonable arguments for my recusal from anything that the city council needs to do. But I'm not going to say anything right now that I haven't already said publicly or other people haven't said publicly. Also think that just leaving this to the city's code enforcement is not, not sufficient because everyone knows the code enforcement is impotent. The public deserves to hear from the city council about this tragedy and not to hear simply that there's a code enforcement investigation and that therefore we should remain silent out of concern about prejudicing an investigation that we're not involved in. So on Thursday night, as we've all heard, PCH claimed another life. While the cause of the fatal collision remains under investigation, as we've just heard from the sheriff's department, reliable reports reflect the driver of the vehicle that caused the collision by driving in the wrong lane of traffic had attended the 4th of July party at Nobu. Indeed, the Malibu Daily News has published a photo of the driver at the party before the collision. I'm sure that the sheriff's department will be collecting all kinds of other evidence of that fact. Additionally, a representative of the sheriff's department is reported to have stated, actually, I've seen the report, that speed and alcohol are considered to be contributing factors to the fatal collision. In 2023, last 4th of July, Nobu hosted an unpermitted 4th of July party. The event caused all sorts of disruption and threatened the health, safety, and welfare of the community and the tens of thousands, if not hundreds of thousands of visitors who traveled to Malibu to enjoy our beaches, hiking trails, and tranquil rural environment on the outskirts of the second largest city in the country. This year, it appears the danger came to fruition. A man is dead and two others are injured, including the woman who had attended the Nobu party. This year, Nobu did apply for a permit to hold its 4th of July bash. Many residents publicly and privately opposed the grant of the permit. Nonetheless, on June 10, the planning director, who's since tendered his resignation, granted the permit. Today, another person is dead from a collision that appears to have a nexus to the Nobu party. On June 13, the city manager provided a memo to the full city council explaining the background of the permit. That memorandum is a public record. Anybody who wants to see it can get it. The memorandum states in pertinent part as follows. I'm not going to read the whole memo, but I'm going to read the introductory portion of it. This is a, again, this is a public record. On June 10, 2024, the city issued a temporary use permit at 22706 PCH Nobu for a private event that will be held on Thursday, July 4, 2024, from 4 to 11 p.m. The event is invitation only indoors and will not, and not open to the public. The application stated a maximum of 250 guests will arrive and depart via shuttle service from an offsite location outside city limits. The address given was 2640 Main Street, Santa Monica. The exception to this would be VIP guests who can be dropped off and picked up at the event site. After reviewing the application and public correspondence, staff had the following concerns. One, event, timing, loitering, traffic, noise. Two, traffic, I'm sorry, the trash, not, not traffic the first time. It's two, traffic. Three, parking. Four, event population. City staff contacted the Los Angeles County Sheriff's Department and the Los Angeles County Fire Department for input on the TUP request. Additionally, the city met with the applicant in tandem with the LASD to discuss staff and public concerns. As a result of this collaboration, the city did not permit any lane closures on PCH and required the onsite presence of LASD and city code enforcement staff to ensure compliance with the TUP conditions. With the assistance of the city's partner agencies, the following conditions were levied on the applicant in order to address the concerns raised by residents, staff, and LASD. The list is a high-level summary of conditions to the TUP that address the concerns listed above. And then he went on, the city manager, to, to provide all the various conditions. They're part of the TUP itself. They're in the memo. They're very, they were, they were good and serious conditions that were designed to protect the health, safety, and welfare of our community. After receiving that memo, I wrote to the city manager, thanked him for providing the information, but I added the following. The conditions appear to be helpful. They were, for the most part. The only condition that concerns me is number 33. And this is where we get to enforcement, our enforcement actions. The condition was if applicant is shown to violate terms of this permit, the applicant will pay a $5,000 fine to be collected by the city. That's the condition. I believe that to be meaningless to Nobu or any other wealthy applicant, as Josh commented earlier this evening. In the future, I encourage you to consider a condition that mandates that the event be shut down immediately and guests required to leave if the city detects a violation that's not cured promptly upon being brought to the applicant's attention. In my view, it's also insufficient to say that future TUPs may be denied. Rather, I'd make it an express condition that a material violation of the TUP will result in a one-year moratorium. And I would actually, upon thinking about that further or longer, on any special events at a location. A fine, a modest fine, which $5,000 is to a wealthy applicant, is the cost of doing business. It's a tip. When I was in college, I took a course on the law of ancient Rome. In ancient Rome, there was no such thing as a crime committed by one citizen against another citizen. Rather, all offenses were considered to be civil in nature and subject to a schedule of fines and punishments. Legend has it, a wealthy Roman citizen around the first century B.C. would stroll through Rome accompanied by one of his slaves who carried a pouch of money. The wealthy citizen would slap other citizens in the face and his slave would then pay the specified penalty. Nobu and other wealthy property owners in Malibu have no problem paying a small fine to slap our residents in the face by disregarding their peaceful enjoyment of our small town and by jeopardizing the health, safety, and welfare of our community and our visitors. I pause to add that Steve Euring and I proposed more than a year ago that the city council create an ad hoc committee to promptly propose amendments to the Malibu Municipal Code to add real teeth to the provisions that address the consequences of violating our laws, with particular emphasis on special events and temporary events. As we advocated at the time, the fines for violations of events in which there is a commercial component should result in the full disgorgement of any profit from the event plus an additional penalty so that it's not profitable to violate our law. Unfortunately, the majority of the city council rejected our proposal and sent the issue to the black hole of the Brown Act Committee called ZERACIS, where the proposal would be tied up in bureaucratic red tape. In that regard, I note that ZERACIS has not yet even met to consider that proposal, much less act on it. If the city council had approved that proposal to establish a streamlined process to increase the fines for holding unpermitted events, the tragic loss of life on the 4th of July might have been avoided. Instead, today, another person is dead. Getting back to Nobu's permit, after learning that the planning director had issued the permit, multiple residents wrote to the city to protest the grant of the permit and asked that their objections be viewed as an appeal to the planning commission. Although the planning director's grant of the permit was appealable to the planning commission and thereafter to this body, if any party to the appeal was dissatisfied with the planning commission's decision, it costs $750 for a resident to commence an appeal to the planning commission or the city council. And our residents understandably are unwilling to pay $750 to benefit someone else. In that regard, I note that, again, I've advocated the elimination of the appeal fee, but I've been unable to secure approval for that. And I'll note that the Coastal Commission allows appeals free of charge based on the view that there should be no impediment to the public's access to review of subordinate decisions. In any event, and as I previously explained, the permit granted for the Nobu party was expressly conditioned upon many things. One of them was that the applicant had to receive the approval of the Public Works Department of a safe and viable traffic plan from which, by a date certain, that date came and went. And our planet, Director of Public Works, Rob De Beau, was not persuaded the traffic plan proposed for the Nobu party was safe and viable. So he declined to sign off on the plan. I applaud him for that. Accordingly, the city advised Nobu that the temporary use permit was null and void based on failure to satisfy its express conditions that were set forth from the day the permit was granted. After learning that the condition, that the TUP had been determined to be null and void, I inquired of the city manager and the acting city attorney whether the city has the facility to stop the event from occurring without a permit. I volunteered the following, which I also posted on social media. In my view, the city should demand that Nobu confirm that it will not proceed with a party in violation of the law and then seek an emergency temporary restraining order if Nobu does anything other than confirm that it will adhere to our law. And if Nobu commits to abide by the law but then proceeds with its unlawful, unlawful event, the sheriff's department should shut the event down and arrest the manager of the facility as the party police. I didn't say that, but I'm adding that now. I could be mistaken, but I believe that the city manager has the authority to direct the acting city attorney to proceed with emergency enforcement, given the lack of time to convene a meeting of the city council. Or I suppose we could have had an emergency special meeting. As I said, I posted those views on social media where many residents had expressed their concerns about the party and were, because they were eager to learn what the city was planning to do to prevent the unpermitted and potentially dangerous event from moving forward. When I did not receive a reply to my inquiry, I wrote again to the city manager and the acting city attorney. I wrote very shortly, tersely, how does the city prevent the event from moving forward without a permit? Has LASD been asked to shut it down if it moves forward unlawfully? TRO, question mark, question mark, question mark. Again, no reply to my inquiry. A few days later, however, the city manager sent a memorandum to the full city council with copies to representatives of the sheriff's department. That is also a public record available to anyone who wishes to read it. The memorandum stated in pertinent part as follows. Regarding the null and void temporary use permit for the Nobu 4th of July event, I wanted to provide some clarification on both why the permit was not issued. I think he means why it was issued, but then determine null and void. And what actions the city has or is taking to ensure we do not run into issues on the day of July 4 and have a plan to address any issues that may arise. The permit required Nobu to provide additional details and information to satisfy the conditions of the TUP no later than one week prior to the event, or the permit would be considered null and void. Nobu did not satisfy those conditions, conditions related to the parking, traffic, and circulation plan that were required. As a result, the permit was deemed null and void, and there's not sufficient time to reapply for a permit for an event on July 4. The city manager then went on to list a number of actions the city was taking to ensure compliance. The first of which was meeting with representatives from Malibu Lost Hills Station and Nobu management to inform them that Nobu cannot hold this event, but they may maintain regular business operations. There's various other things in the memo. I'd encourage everyone to get ahold of it and read it. I'm not going to waste time going through the details. It ended, though, saying also, if Nobu goes forward with the event, it will be a woeful violation of the Malibu Municipal Code and constitute a misdemeanor, which the memorandum explained to be punishable by a fine of not more than $1,000 or by imprisonment in the county jail for a period not exceeding six months or both. City manager's memorandum also stated, quote, "Evidence would be needed to demonstrate that the event is occurring and that the restaurant is not just operating pursuant to its CUP." And I think that's consistent with what we heard from Captain C2 earlier. While that evidence plainly exists, Nobu's own lawyer publicly posted on social media on the morning of July 4, hours before the party began, quote, "The party is going forward today," close quote. And he posted the next morning, quote, "The party went off without a hitch," close quote. This is Nobu's lawyer. There's also photographic evidence, including photos and videos posted by the party sponsor, and eyewitness evidence, including that of law enforcement hired as additional security for the party. The city posted an abbreviated version of the city manager's memo on social media. That post began as follows. The city has received a number of inquiries about whether a private event will be held at Nobu Restaurant in Malibu on July 4. While Nobu applied for a temporary use permit, to hold such an event, they failed to provide required information and comply with conditions related to parking, traffic, and their circulation plan. As a result, the proposed event is not authorized to proceed.
Trevor, I think the city attorney has.
These are all public statements that have been made by the city in one place or another.
We've, for the advice, I'm just saying, this is not an item that's on the agenda, so we can't have an extended discussion. We can have a comment or put an item on a future agenda or ask a question, but we can't have an extended discussion of items that aren't on the agenda.
Okay, well, if I'm going to be told I can't speak further and that's an enforceable order, I'll stop. But otherwise, I'm going to continue to explain what happened.
Well, council member, you are basically reading the public record. It's akin to reading the phone book at this point. If you have points to make, please make them in the essence of brevity. I believe you can do that. You're very well schooled at making your presentation, so please get to the salient points.
The city manager's memo was on July 2nd, which was just two days before the party was scheduled to occur and just two days before the party appears to have led to yet another fatality on PCH. Between the time the conditional permit was declared null and void for failure to satisfy all conditions, multiple residents reported the event continued to be advertised on social media.
Council member, I don't know what else to tell you. You've been advised that this is not on the agenda. We can put it on the agenda at a future date.
Okay, well, that's where I was headed, but there's a lot more information that I think is important with respect to the proposal. But their proposal is, I actually would like a consensus to place this issue, issue on a future city council meeting agenda to provide direction to the staff on how to handle this matter. It's too important to let the staff decide on their own. Past enforcement actions, as I said, have been anemic. Depending on what the acting city attorney advises, the discussion may occur in open or closed session, but I think it is important for the city council to vet what occurred and to decide what direction to give to the staff as to how to handle this. We've had too many pay-for-play settlements of enforcement matters where, again, the cost of doing business was just passed on to the city and nothing, and nothing further. I think that the city should consider whether there are legal actions that should be taken, not simply enforcement actions. And there are other things that may or may not occur. So I would like to request consensus from the city council to put on the agenda, either for a closed session, if the city attorney indicates that's appropriate, or for an open session, we can get public comment to discuss this.
All right. Thank you for getting to the point. All right. We have a request for consensus. Do we have a second on this? We have a second from.
I'll give you a second.
Council member Euring. Let's do a roll call vote on this, just to.
May I ask a clarifying question?
Sergeant, go ahead.
So from what I heard, though, I'm not hearing exactly what direction we're giving the staff to bring back to us. Is there a specific couple of items that you want to hear? What is it that they're supposed to prepare in order to put something on the agenda?
I don't think the staff needs to prepare anything. We just need to have, they just need to put on the agenda that we are to discuss what direction to give them. If they prepare a memo telling us what those directions are, they're giving us direction.
But is that in the fine structure? Is that in the, how we're going to interact with commercial businesses? Is that how TUPs are going to be or CUPs are going to be reviewed and assigned or granted? And I'm just not understanding what exactly we're going to be discussing. And I'd like to have it a little bit more narrowly focused so we can give points that we wanted to stick to.
I'm not proposing a member, an agenda item to discuss how to deal with things in general. I'm talking about a discussion of what to do about Nobu.
Can I request? I think it's a valid point to maybe focus this down a little bit. Trevor, have you got a recommendation on maybe how to handle this?
If, if the council wants to consider potential litigation, there's also been a threat of litigation against the council that could be considered in closed session. A general court, a general consideration of code enforcement by the council, I would not recommend that. It's also generally not within the council's purview to manage code enforcement on a, on a case-by-case basis outside of a few particular circumstances.
Okay, so understanding your comment, perhaps the motion would be that we could have a private session when ready to review potential litigation or not?
If, if you wanted to bring an item back, I would suggest that it be to be in a closed session to consider potential litigation options and the threat that's been made by Nobu.
The city manager's memo indicated that one possible outcome of this would be proceedings to terminate Nobu's CUP. Can the city council have an agenda item and a discussion of whether it wishes to direct the city staff to pursue such proceedings?
That is an option. That is one of the, 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 one of the roles the council does have. I believe the council can initiate a, a revocation proceeding. I'll have to double.
So that's, that's one of.
An item to consider.
That is one of the things.
Revocation proceeding.
So that is one of the things that would be appropriate. So that is one of the things that would be appropriate for consideration during the agenda item that I'm proposing.
All right, wait just a second. Are we proposing a discussion of that CUP in closed session or public session?
You cannot consider the CUP in closed session.
You can or cannot?
Cannot. So if you want to consider litigation, either the threat of Nobu or potential litigation against Nobu, I recommend that you do that in closed session, if you want to do that. If you want to consider potential initiating revocation proceedings against Nobu, you would need to do that in open session. You can also direct a report to be brought back from the city manager about progress on code enforcement on this item, and then make a determination at that point in time as well.
Okay, Paul, go ahead.
We have been threatened with litigation, so I would think that the sensible thing to do is to have set up a closed session to discuss the threat of litigation. And in the absence of them apologizing for threatening us with litigation, I would assume that we would go forward with this either at a special meeting or in that first meeting of August.
Any comments?
Yeah. City?
He's standing on the button for a while.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Actually, not to this, I was waiting until the end, but thank you for the opportunity to speak. I just wanted to remind the council members to refrain from making specific comments about staff members or their performance, whether it be individuals or divisions. Please stick to the policy. Thank you.
Okay.
Nothing I said was intended to, and I don't believe did, criticize any member of the staff, so if it was --
I think you said they were incompetent.
No, I did not.
Impotent was the word.
Enforcement is anemic and impotent. I didn't mean any person, I meant the process.
I apologize. Thank you for clarifying your comments.
All right. Is the resolution, what you're asking for consent on to bring it back, is to have at, when the staff is ready or a date certain, a closed session to review litigation, potential litigation?
No, I'm asking for an open session to consider directing the staff to commence revocation proceedings for the CUP, as well as any other thing the city council may believe is appropriate and is within the city council's jurisdiction.
Okay. Trevor, is that acceptable for the city council to do at this point?
The city can set an item for a future agenda to consider revocation of the CUP, as I mentioned before. What other options would be available to them? If it includes litigation, I would not suggest discussing that in open session.
Okay.
And to be clear, I'm not asking for an agenda item to determine whether to revoke the CUP. I'm asking for an agenda item to determine whether to direct the city staff to proceed with a proceeding. There'd have to be due process, so I'm not suggesting that we just willy-nilly do that. I'm saying that we should have a determination whether to direct the staff to proceed with that type of a hearing.
So if I could get perhaps the motion clarified here.
Sure. A couple of things to consider is that I believe there is an application open from Nobu right now to amend their CUP, so that may be coming to the planning commission at a point in the future. That could be updated if there is an item brought back. So the motion, if you want to bring this item forward, would be to bring back an item to consider whether to initiate revocation or modification proceedings regarding the Nobu CUP.
Would that be at the council level or the planning commission level? Because we have a pending CUP.
The proposal is to have this to come to the council, to have them make the initiation.
All right.
Or any other action that is within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city council.
Okay. Do we want to set a date for that, August 8, which is probably already packed to the gills?
You can set it for a date uncertain, and the city manager will bring it back.
Date uncertain?
Yeah, thank you. We'll pull the council and find a date that works.
Earliest convenience of the city manager.
Earliest possible, I think. I would prefer to stay as early as possible. All right, is the seconder comfortable with this?
Let me just, and I was going to save this to my comments, but I do not publish on social media. I've said nothing to anybody, okay? But I read a lot of it, okay? I've been inundated with it over the course of the last week. I think this was a watershed event for the city. All right? Nobu said, in other words, "You have no rules."
Okay, well, it's --
Okay, I'm just, I'm not going to go, okay? And I think the residents believe, based upon materials we put out and what we did, that we're incompetent. And I think we have to do something to either demonstrate that we're not, demonstrate that the city is going to support and take care of the residents, and it's got rules, and they will be followed. So however you want to do that, but I think we ought to do that sooner rather than later because, guys, we are not looking good, okay? And we've got to have, we don't have a backbone, and we better get one.
All right. If I could make a friendly amendment to this, I would like to have at least an update on the enforcement actions at the August 8 meeting or before. Are you acceptable to that?
Sure. I mean, I'd love to have this hearing, this matter on that date, but if we can't have it on that date, I understand.
August 12, I'm sorry, August 12.
I'm okay with that.
All right. With that, if everybody's in agreement, no other questions, let's put it to a roll call vote.
Councilmember Silverstein?
Yes.
Councilmember Euring?
Yes.
Councilmember Gassanti?
Sure.
Mayor Protem Riggins?
Yes.
Mayor Stewart?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right. Bruce, do you have anything else?
I have a lot of other comments, but I've been told I shouldn't read them, so I'll end at that. Thank you.
You're never going to get a phone book for a filibuster. All right. Who else would like to make a comment?
I'm ready.
All right, Paul.
Okay, like most of you guys, I've had a busy last couple of weeks. I'm a member of Arson Watch. Arson Watch had me out every night, July 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, and 6. I passed last night. We also, I also took part in a mediation over school separation last week. It was not as productive as I would have hoped. And I also was fortunate enough to have the joyous experience of working the July 4 parade with the CERT team. And the July 4 celebration was joyous, and there were kids everywhere, and I can't believe that we aren't doing more things like this. And I hope that other people have a chance to participate in it and enjoy it, and it motivates them to start something like it in their own neighborhood. I will tell you that the Malibu West Homeowners Association currently has their goats, and they are working hard right now, clearing the area around it, and we are looking forward to having the third annual running of the goats, which will be coming up probably sometime during next week and end up on the cover of the Malibu Times again. So if you have a chance to attend, please do so. It's a wonderful thing, and we should be doing it in every single neighborhood. The city of Malibu should have their own herd of goats. Thank you.
Okay. Who's next?
I think Joe did it. I made my comment on Nobu, so I hope that we get, there's just a lot of questions. I'd like to have some where we can ask those questions and get answers. Ranger Tim, thanks for showing up. You should have been here last week when the people from Sycamore Park were here, because it would have been a much more interesting meeting. Did you see the letter that the city sent to the MRCA regarding what's going on in Sycamore Park?
No, I have not. I haven't seen that letter.
All right. All right, just had one question.
Yeah, Trevor, did you send that letter to the residents in Sycamore Park? Did it go to the residents? At Sycamore, the residents? Did that letter go to the residents in Sycamore Park?
The letter was sent out, correct?
It was sent out, yeah. I don't know that it was sent to anybody at Sycamore Park. We'd be happy to forward it to them.
Okay, so, and just one comment. I read the letter, and it's very nice. It asked Joe to do a lot of things. It sort of accommodated what we're trying to do, but if the MRCA's response is what it's been in the past, where they basically tell us to take a hike, what is your next step?
Who are you directing that to?
Trevor.
Depends on what the response is.
I said, no response. They don't, you don't hear anything from them. What are you going to do? And when are you going to do it?
Well, I don't take any action myself, but we would consult with the city manager about the next steps, or with the city council, depending on is appropriate, about how we would address the situation.
So right now, we don't have a plan for any follow-up?
That's not true.
Who's got the plan?
The letter has been sent. There's also other items that have been discussed.
Trevor, look, Trevor, I'm following up on the thing we had at the last meeting, where we talked about the fact that the residents came in, they indicated their displeasure with what was going on, and they were looking for some help from the city. I'm just trying to see if we're ever going to get them that help that they were looking for.
I absolutely believe we will.
And get a timeframe to do that.
We, I don't want to reveal all the discussions I've had with city staff and with city council members and things that are in motion or anything that's --
We'll have a response, and then burying your future, is that a good statement?
I would think so.
It's not a very positive or confident statement, Trevor. Okay, all right, move along.
Let's move on.
Mr. Mayor, may I say for the record, I read the letter, I thought it was very good.
Yeah, but it didn't, Joe hasn't done anything. Okay. I just want to make a recommendation. Last week, I think it was last week, I got an email from the city where Lindsay Horvath and Supervisor Han proposed some changes to the supervisor process. Basically, she's looking to increase the number of supervisors to give, so there's better representation of the districts they take care of. There's going to be recommendations for the ethics committee in there, and some more transparency in the budgets. And they were looking for a letter that sort of just supported their efforts to make those changes. And I asked Alexis, if she could draft, would we have a letter like that? We can get done. So I'd like the city's agreement that we can send a support letter to the supervisors indicating our support for some of the changes they're trying to make. I don't know if everybody paid attention to what they did, but I think Lindsay Horvath has been good to us. I think we deserve, she deserves to get some support back.
All right.
I was just going to say, I don't have a problem with supporting, but until I see all the recommendations, I'd have a difficult time just agreeing to everything. But is that possible to share, that communication? I don't recall getting that communication.
How can we do that? Alexis, if you could maybe give us an idea of how we can get that done?
Well, we don't have this on the agenda, but we're just talking about approving a letter.
If you want to approve a letter, we need to agendize it for a future meeting, so we can bring it back.
Got to be out tomorrow.
Yeah, that's the problem. Let me suggest this. I have read the three, there are three key points to this. Expand the supervisors to nine from five. It's to have an ethics committee and --
Transparency on budgets.
Transparency on budget. Pretty wholesome, and Alexis has a letter. I would be glad to second something that says it's approved, be sent by the city manager.
We can't approve a letter. The council members can individually write in support. That is something that is allowed, but we can't take action as a city unless we have an item that's agendized.
Okay. So we'd each have to write a letter separately, right?
You are able to write a letter as yourself, yes.
May I ask a question of council?
Paul.
Would it be possible for Alexis to circulate the letter to us so we can use it as our models for our own letter that we could send off tomorrow? Each of us individually, I mean.
With a copy of City Letterhead?
If I may clarify just for a moment, mayor and members of the council, what was circulated was a media advisory from Supervisor Horvath's office stating the details of the package that was pushed out. The item will go before the Board of Supervisors tomorrow, but it will also appear on three future board meetings. So should the council want to give direction to take action of support or against, we can agendize that at the upcoming meeting. Otherwise, yes, I can circulate the information that's publicly available from the supervisor's office, should you wish to write your own letters of support.
Thank you.
Can I ask you a question? Did Supervisor Horvath's office indicate that having a letter to them at a future date, or do they need it tomorrow?
The supervisor's office has requested support as soon as the council is able to provide that. The meeting is taking place tomorrow, should any council member choose to support at that public meeting.
Okay, why don't we do this? Let's put a motion to have the formal letter from the council on August 12 with the copy of your letter as an example for us to send individually if we wish.
For tomorrow.
For tomorrow. Is that okay?
Yeah, I just think we should support it as best we can.
I agree, and I'd be glad to second your motion.
Okay. I have a question of the city's attorney. Since this has come up in comment, are we allowed to express our view, not as a vote, but our individual views as to whether we believe it's a good idea? Because if we were, the city manager would then have heard publicly what our views are, and he could refer to that in his letter, even though it's not a vote.
The council members can make a brief comment on the item. No, we can't take up the item or make out a position together, but a brief comment would be appropriate.
May I make a brief comment?
I think you need to make a brief comment.
I'm inclined to support that, and I don't know that I have the time to write a letter for tomorrow, but I would support that, and I'll support it if we have a meeting to vote on it.
And I'd like to say that I think it's a great idea. It's been rolling around the county government for at least 20 years that I know about. It's more than time for them to expand the Board of Supervisors, so you can, I have expressed that I'm in favor of it.
Mary Ann?
I also agree. I think that hopefully we can get more supervisors like Supervisor Horvath. I think she has been remarkable. And ethics and transparency are always welcome.
So let's do this. Let's put in a formal letter from the council on the agenda for the 12, but the city manager can certainly write a letter indicating our conversation. How's that? Does that work?
You can't direct him to write a letter.
You can or can't?
Can't. We can't.
Okay, but if he'd like to write a letter.
He has discretion.
He has discretion, right.
All right. With that, is there a consensus to have?
And the letter would express the support from the council, right? Express some of our comments.
He can't write a letter as the city manager. He can write it for himself, so.
Yeah, but he could say, you know, I can't report for the entire council, but you know what I heard last night.
And we hope to have it on our next agenda to discuss it.
Right? He can do that. There you go.
You can definitely reference the public comment of the council member comments.
All right. We got a program.
All right, hold on a second. Paul.
Would it be improper for everybody to go home and pull out their phone and send a text to Lindsay Horvath expressing our support?
You're welcome to text her if you want to support.
Or call in during the Board of Supervisors meeting tomorrow and express your support.
All right, let's do this. I think we have, let's build, get a record, all in favor of the August 12 formal letter and letting the city manager do as he wishes about sending the letter. Is that everybody's consensus?
Yes.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed to being done? It's approved. All right, are you through?
Yep, thank you.
Okay, I'll try and be quick. So I wanted to announce there is another weed pulling event at Point Doom Headlands on Wednesday from 9 to 12. Parking is available on Westwood Beach Parking Lot, and there's a short trail that'll take you up to the area to be weeded. And for those members of our community, they're 62 and older, you can contact Los Angeles County Beaches and Harbor, and they have a special parking pass available that I believe gets discounted parking on select days and times, so this time might be one, and encourage carpooling and the such. I wanted to say I take part in the 4th of July Point Doom Parade. It's my first time actually participating in the parade. Notice at the time, I'm a spectator. I want to give special thanks to Alicia Peak. She organized a fantastic event. Paul Major with the Community Services District did a great job with the volunteers and moving[1752.86] did a great job with the volunteers and moving the parade along. The VOPs were remarkable. Thank you very much. Saw them out there directing traffic. CERT members were there, keeping everybody organized and functioning. Our sheriff's deputies were in the areas. And just a special note of thanks, they were out there doing stop sign patrols. So thank you very much for getting people to stop at the stop signs on Point Dume. Hope that keeps up. Our Los Angeles Fire Department took part in it, and we also had a special visit from Congressman Brad Sherman. And it was great to have him come out, see our community, and see the great community spirit that everybody displayed. And adults, children, everybody had a fantastic time, both in the parade and at the events that Malibu Elementary School PTA also participated in providing with the community. So thank you for that. I wanted to say congratulations to all our Olympians and our athletes that will be partaking in Paris this coming up. We have our very own Tom Scharr, who will be competing for, in skateboarding. And we wish him the best of luck, and hopefully he will be bringing home gold in skateboarding in Paris to follow up on his great X Games appearance that he had in Ventura last week. So good luck to all our athletes. I wanted to ask the city manager about winding way. Was that road ever closed? Or did it remain open the entire time there was roadwork going on out there?
I do not have any indication. All the information that we had was from the, from County Water Works was that they were going to be alternating the paving so that there would be a lane of traffic at all time for residents and other people to be able to access up the street. I would need to verify with them if that occurred or not, but I didn't see anything or heard anything from my staff that indicated that the road had been shut down at any point, but I'd need to verify that.
That is what I heard also. I just wanted to confirm that we hadn't received any notification and that all visitors to the Escondido Falls were able to access that pathway on winding way as normal. So perhaps maybe MRCA didn't get the up-to-date information. So please contact us in advance, and we'd be happy to work with you guys to make sure you're all up to date on information. The other question I was going to have in response to Jefferson Wagner and his pictures, would it be possible for you to maybe call Nobu and Soho House management and ask them if they could perhaps do some litter and trash pickup in the roadway? I think we can all agree that it's pretty good indication that that trash is probably left over from people visiting their establishments during the Fourth of July weekend. I also took part in school district mediation. I also was able to do, introduce our, for the library speaker series. And for anyone who hasn't attended the library speaker series, I encourage everybody to go down. They're always fascinating subjects. This one was about a stock scheme of back in, I believe, the late 1700s called the South Seas Company. And the amazing people who invested and ran up the stock up to over $1,000 a share. So it was pretty interesting that that was occurring back in those times. The other thing I've got is, in my reading of different city materials, came across there's an award that honors Walt and Lucille Keller, and it was inaugurated in 2016. And they were the first recipients. Unfortunately, I think from a number of events, it hasn't been awarded again. I was hoping that I could get consensus from the council, that we could ask the Parks and Rec Commission to take up this award and find individuals in our community that exemplify the environmental stewardship that the Kellers have done for our community. And just hoping our fellow council members would direct Parks and Rec staff to find individuals or groups that would be recommended for honor and that they could bring it through, similar to the Jake Karujian Award that they currently do.
Paul, go ahead.
Do we need, do we need to agendize this? I'm seeing lots of nods, so.
Yes.
Okay.
Can we put it on August 11th or August 12th?
Or how about a date, next meeting after that? I think August 12th is going to be a long meeting.
Do we have two meetings?
I see the city manager's finger was raised a moment ago. It was his pointer finger, by the way.
Getting a little ahead of myself, but might want to look a little further. It might be enough that we might want to bring it into the discussion on the work plan. I'm not sure how much on, you know, day-to-day activity that's going to require from staff. If it's something minor, we could, we could certainly add that into the workload, but we might, might want to take a look at that as part of the work plan.
Can you maybe come back to us at the next meeting with just part of your city manager comments and tell us where we, where this might fit? It could just be an award. It could be a major project. If you just tell us so we know what to do with it.
It's already established. I'm sorry to interrupt, but it's already established as an award. So if, maybe we can have that on the second meeting in August to familiarize ourselves with it, and then we can direct how the appropriate ways of getting that into the rotation of getting people awarded for that.
Let me have a conversation with you, council member, and see, you know, we may just be able to do that, or maybe it's something we need to come back at the work plan. So, and I'd be happy to give a prognosis on that when we come back on August 12th.
Okay.
That'd be okay?
That'd be great, yeah.
That'd be okay? Okay. Anything else?
Uh, no. I think everybody else calm. Took care of everything else.
Okay. All right. I'm going to try and be quick. First off, Alicia Peak is God. That's all I can say. You have an event, and you need somebody to run it. You need something inspirational. She's there. She's a real asset to the city. I wish she wasn't so busy so we could use her talents maybe up here. For Meryl, just, I know you already left, but hopefully you catch this later. It's not about the money for the patrol officers from the Highway Patrol or the deputies from the Sheriff's Department. They just don't have the staff. The city has allocated the money each year to bring additional people in, but they don't have the, they don't have the resources to provide them to us. For example, the Highway Patrol, we asked for six. They basically said we can have three, and that's all we, that's all they could come up with. So it's not that we're not trying. If they can get us more folks, we'll take them, and we've got the money to fund it. Let's see. On my quick comments, safety's been the theme the last couple of weeks. On the 27th, I did the PCH Safety Kickoff. And over in the corner, for those of you that are here, we've got materials from that event. Make sure you see the video and the MTV song that goes along with it. It's pretty, it's pretty good. On July 2nd, I was in Sacramento for the Assembly Privacy Consumer Protection Committee. That passed eight to one. Senator Stern's bill for a two-point penalty, as the city manager said, that passed as well. And I want to reiterate exactly where we are on this. We're not going to wait until these January 1st of next year to get this started. The city staff is already doing the preliminary work in anticipation that we are going to have a bill signed probably in September. If, as we say in the South, good Lord willing and the creek don't rise. We still have to get through the Appropriations Committee, which we are hopeful for that, has to pass the Assembly, then has to get signed by the governor. We think the governor's going to sign it. So with that kind of a set of barriers which are surmountable compared to where we were, speed cameras are going to be moving forward. And we talked about it this morning with the city manager, and we've got hope to have those up as soon as we can, probably early next year. The other cities, the other six cities that had the test cameras from last year haven't even gotten, I think one of them has an RFP out. That's as far as they've gotten. We intend to be much quicker for that. We'll have them up first, I guarantee you. I want to comment on something from the Malibu Times. They had two articles about speed cameras. And the inference I took away from that was this was a money bill. It's about trying to get money for the city, fines from speed cameras. That's not the case at all. The example that was used by the Malibu Times was a small city in Iowa to set up a speed trap. 25 mile an hour speed limit. You go over the speed limit, they give you a ticket. Anybody that's gone to Mammoth knows exactly where that would be applicable on Highway 395. But the issue for us is we are specifically prohibited from running this as a speed trap. You have to go 11 miles an hour over the speed limit. We'll have signs with plenty of lead time for you to see that you're going to get clocked in advance of these signs, these speed cameras. And it's not meant to be a moneymaker. Once we recover the cost, which these are not going to be cheap, this is going to be expensive. It's cheaper than having five deputies or sheriff or CHP officers 24 hours a day, but it's not going to be cheap. We're talking about a seven-figure expense for this probably to put all of them in. And once we've recovered our operating expenses, the excess money doesn't go to the city. It goes to a fund for PCH Safety. So it's not a moneymaker for the city. It's meant to be something, as I've been quoted as saying, I hope we don't get any tickets on this. I hope when people see the fact that they're on a speed camera, they slow down. If they don't, they're going to get a ticket. But hopefully, we can change behavior. Also, I want to make a quick comment about the grants passed Supreme Court ruling, as Councilmember Silverstein mentioned. My reading on this is that safe streets, safe sidewalks, and safe parks are now a constitutional right. And we've got to get through the county council to get clearance for the sheriff's deputies is what they can do. But times are changing. But I want to emphasize one thing. We're not talking about throwing people in jail over this. This is a tool in the toolbox to get compliance for homeless people, to help them along. If you tell them they can sleep on a sidewalk and there's no penalty for it, they're not going to change their ways. So we need to work with them and get them off the street in a humane way. And I tell you this over and over again. The citizens of Malibu need to be very proud of what's been accomplished for homeless in our city. We've gone from over 250 people homeless to now the official count is around 50. Each one of these people has his own agenda, and this grant pass ruling is going to be a tool for us to help each one of those people. That's all I've got. All right. Let's quickly go to our item 7A. And I think we can, anybody need a break, or can we keep plowing through?
Please get through this one.
Yeah, let's get 7A done. All right. So 7A, who is, who's presenting that?
Good evening, Mayor Stewart, members of city council. My name is Kate Minisco, Recreation Manager. The item before you this evening is the annual appointment of commissioners to the Harry Borowski Memorial Youth Commission. The two-month recruitment resulted in 11 candidates that successfully completed both the application and the interview process. In the interviews, the applicants, grade seven through 12, share their volunteer and leadership experience, involvement in school activities, and their aspirations for becoming a member of the youth commission. And staff's recommendation this evening is to appoint all 11 applicants to the 2024-2025 Youth Commission beginning in September. And I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Do we have any speakers on Zoom?
We don't have any speaker slips, and this time we don't have any raised hands on Zoom either.
All right.
May I make a motion to take staff's recommendation on the appointees to the Harry Borowski Youth Commission?
Second motion.
Pardon?
Second.
Second.
Bruce, seconds. Any other comments? If none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Being none, it's approved. All right. Do we want to plow forward, or? All right, let's go on to consent calendar. Do we have any items to be pulled by the public or the council? Pardon me, do we have any speaker slips?
We don't have any speaker slips, and we don't have any raised hands on Zoom either.
All right. Anybody on the council want to pull anything?
It was me.
Paul?
I have a minor change for item 3B3, which is a set of minutes that has an error in it.
Do we need to handle that separately, or can we?
Yeah, we should pull the item to.
All right, we'll pull 3B. Which one was it?
3B3.
3B3 is pulled, and that'll come back at a future date, correct? Okay.
Actually, the change is small enough that I think you could probably get everybody to go, yeah, that's what I thought he said. And then we would go ahead and vote for it.
Okay, then we'll keep it on. We'll pull it.
Yeah.
Review it there.
Move to approve the consent calendar excluding 3B3.
All right.
A second.
Got a second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Being none, it's approved. Let's go to 3B3.
3B3, on page three, it describes Norm Haney's plan as allowing small steel water barrels. They're actually 400-gallon tanks. Each tank is 400 gallons. I don't think, when I think of a small steel water barrel, I'm thinking of a 55-gallon drum or something like that. And I'd like to make it clear that what he was talking about were individual tanks which are commercially available that are about 400 gallons apiece.
Paul, would it be sufficient to just strike the word "small"?
It would be sufficient to strike the word "small" and then, and then strike the word "barrels" and substitute "tanks."
I'll support that.
All right.
I'll accept that change.
Have a motion and a second?
Yeah.
All right. Anybody have any comments, changes? Being none, let's put it to a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Being none, it's approved. Okay, we got one item left.
4A.
And who is presenting that? Boy, Richard, it's hard for you to work in all that glow.
I hope she read that.
All right, Richard.
She'll be running for another hour. Good evening, mayor and members of city council. I have Joseph Smith with us via Zoom this evening to help present this item. What this is regarding is we've recently processed two local coastal program amendments. They were heard at the February meeting of the Coastal Commission, one being the item we presented to you at the last city council meeting for the wireless amendment, and the second was a modification to the LCP's sign regulations. Essentially, in the LCP, there is language currently, and this is what we're seeking to modify, that prohibits the posting of a sign that identifies private property along the beach. And so what we have before you this evening is the result of discussions with the Coastal Commission and the LCPA as they modified it. What Joseph will present to you tonight is going to be a quick history, so you can see what the staff's original proposal was to the Coastal Commission, and then what it ended up being as a modification by the Coastal Commission. And the council this evening, as we mentioned in the staff report, has three options. One option being accepting the modifications. And if you do, then I will report to the Coastal Commission that the council accepted the modification. There's also the option to deny the Coastal Commission's modifications, and you could do that one of two ways. Don't take any action or formally deny it. And lastly, if the council wanted staff to pursue further changes, we would then need to essentially withdraw this amendment and file for a new amendment. At this point, we are unable to modify this amendment because the Coastal Commission took action on it. And with that, I'll let Joseph begin the presentation.
Yeah, thanks, Richard. And good evening, Mayor Stewart. I'm happy to be able to present your first public hearing in your mayorship. Congratulations. My name is Joseph Smith, contract planner. And I'll be walking through this one a little bit quicker. Richard covered the main points there. And so thank you for getting that out, Richard. Next slide, please. Just in terms of overview, again, this is the final amendments needed to advance the sign LCPA. It's based on modifications made in March by the Coastal Commission. The way that Coastal does their modification process is they, they're coming back to the city with one change to the land use plan and three changes to the local implementation plan in order to get the certification. City council has six months from the March date to be able to act on this before the LCPA would expire. And next slide. By way of background, just quickly covering October 2020, there was litigation filed in federal court that alleged two LIP sections violated residents' rights to speech under the First Amendment. And these are the two sections here noted in the LIP. There are two LUP policies that staff found that mirror the language or they're very similar. And in November 2020, council initiated the amendment process. Next slide. Oh, I apologize. I have a, I have different slides here. So with respect to the existing LIP language that was, that was amended by council, this LIP section X that was noted is the section that was of concern. Next slide. As well as LIP 3154C, paragraphs 3, 5, and 9 in red, these were the other sections that were noted. Next slide. Just in terms of context, overall, LIP 3154C is a list of requirements that's used when looking at sign requests. And so this is how those three fit into the overall list. And this is just for context. Next slide, please. The two policies in the LUP, 280, the red language is what was identified as being same or similar. And then next slide, 281 as well, which also has language in here. And then next slide, 281 as well, which also has language in here that mirrors. Next slide, please. Moving back to background, April 2021, council adopted a two resolution and an ordinance to amend the LCP. There were no modifications to the general plan or the municipal code. Council approved the LCPA to avoid any implementation that might infringe on residents' constitutional rights, and that ultimately was looked at by the Coastal Commission March of this year with four modifications. Next slide, please. So requested actions to implement the LCPA, it would be adopting a new resolution 2437, which notes that the amendments by Coastal are exempt under SEQA, and it would also repeal the former resolution 2116, as well as modify the LUP formally. Second action would be to do an introduction, first reading of ordinance 520. It would exempt these amendments under SEQA, repealing ordinance 43 and modifying the LIP, and then scheduling a second reading and adoption of that ordinance at your next meeting in August 12, and directing staff to submit the LCPA to Coastal. Next slide, please. So if adopted, the resolution ordinance would be sent to Coastal Commission. The way the process works, as a reminder, is the Coastal Executive Director then looks at what the city sends up, checks for consistency with the March action. If it's consistent, it's then reported to the Coastal Commission, and at that point, the LCPA becomes immediately in effect. Next slide. By way of a summary of Coastal Commission modifications, this comes from the staff report, as staff's language stating that the LCPA, as suggested to be modified, will provide a clear, objective policy and document, sorry, development standard basis for the city's review of signed CDP applications. Next slide. The next few slides just summarize what the Coastal Commission's modifications did. LUP policy 281 is a clarification that a sign must meet certain standards rather than it acting as a sign prohibition if it cannot meet those standards, and it's a nuance that Coastal explains. They did not modify the deletion of the three paragraphs that was cited earlier, but they did add a new criterion, number 12, to be used when reviewing sign requests. They also opened up two other sections, which were not part of the city's ordinance, and that's 3156B3, which adds additional clarifications to ensure internal consistency with sign requirements. Likewise, in the public access session 129D, they added similar language again to ensure internal consistency with the sign requirements. They did not modify the city's amendment to the LUP policy 280 or the other LIP section X, which was deleted. That portion. Next slide, please. Oh, I apologize. Can you go backwards? Thank you. That was an error. I apologize for that. So with that, we did receive correspondence this evening, which came from Christopher Kaiser of Pacific Legal Foundation, dated July 8, 2024. Mr. Kaiser noted that he does represent the Cedars, who were part of the legal challenge in 2020. He noted that they have settled with the Coastal Commission in March 2024 by receiving a coastal permit to allow the Cedars to post a sign on their property referencing the mean high tide line. That action for Coastal to be able to issue that coastal permit was a court order by, I believe, the appeals court, and that's where the jurisdiction came from. It also notes that, he notes that council should exercise caution before accepting these modifications. He explains that in the March 2024 staff report, Coastal staff interprets the existing LIP text, which was used as a basis for the signage, and the letter concludes that he believes the better course of action is to reject the Coastal Commission's modifications and just leave the existing LCP in place. So with that, before you have, as Richard noted, there are essentially three options. I'll just reiterate them again. It is to either accept the Coastal Commission's modifications and complete this LCPA process, which would be by adopting the new resolution and the new ordinance and setting for a second reading. If council does not want to accept the Coastal Commission's modifications, again, two options. One is to take no action, just let the LCPA expire. That would be in September. And then, as a cleanup measure, I would recommend that you follow up with a repeal of the ordinance and resolution from previously, just to get it off of books. A second action would be to take formal action, to formally withdraw the LCPA, and that could be done through repealing the resolution and the ordinance, and then directing staff to transmit that notice of withdrawal to the Coastal Commission staff. With that, if you have any other questions, I'm here. Otherwise, I turn it back to you, Mayor.
Let's ask any questions, and we can see if there's any public comments.
My question is, how of those three options, which most closely approximates what the trial court decided? And I'm asking Mr. Smith that question? Or do I misunderstand it altogether?
If you don't mind, Joseph, let me jump in here for a second. I think perhaps this is best, Trevor was involved in the trial, the planning department was not, so I'll let Trevor answer that. And then also, I think it's important to understand, too, that you mentioned in your presentation, the attorney for the Cedars talked about how Coastal Commission staff made an interpretation. And I think it's important to point out that the way our code is currently, it would be very difficult for the city to make an interpretation that would be in direct conflict with the language of the city's local coastal program. Because as I mentioned earlier, our local coastal program has a sentence in there that talks about prohibiting these types of signs, and that would be removed. And with that, I'll let Trevor speak.
Sure. The trial court, actually, the city was dismissed from the lawsuit, so we weren't a part of it. And then the lawsuit actually settled before final determination was made, but that was after an unfavorable ruling for the Coastal Commission that was trying to get the action dismissed against them.
So to clarify the question and the answer, is there, is there a version of our options that closely matches where the court has come down?
Well, what I would say is, the best would have been if they had just adopted our original proposal, but the, the LCP as proposed by the Coastal Commission is better than what we have on our books right now. You're going to hear from Mr. Cedar, I spoke with him earlier, I'm sorry, Mr. Cedar, his attorney, thanks, Mr. Talcott, who's going to appear, so you might want to hear what he has to say. But I, you know, I would, the staff's recommendation is to go, is to adopt this certification. I would agree with it.
All right. Any other questions before we go to the public? Being none, Kelsey, do we have anybody online? Are speaker slips?
We don't have any speaker slips. We do have a raised hand.
Go ahead, please.
Jeremy?
Yes, hello. As Trevor mentioned, my name is Jeremy Talcott, and I was one of the attorneys that represented Dennis and Leah Cedar in their challenge to the LCP. And I would just reiterate the comments that were made by my colleague, Christopher Keizer, to note that the staff in settling or after settlement with Dennis and Leah Cedar put in a public staff report, an interpretation of the existing language that acknowledges that that language is not intended to prohibit truthful signs. So in other words, the commission staff put forward an avenue for Malibu to begin approving signs under the existing language, so long as those signs don't purport to describe the boundary at a specific location, but instead truthfully state that there is a boundary between public and private lands and referencing the mean high tide line. Under the new suggested language from the Coastal Commission, it requires signs to, where such boundary is ambulatory, which would be essentially anywhere, because the boundary between public and private lands will always be the intersection point of the mean high tide line. The new language requires that it be clearly conveyed the ambulatory nature of that line. And I would just make sure that this city council is aware that the, the public-private boundary and the way the mean high tide line and the elevation of the beach sands intersect is a complicated concept, and I think it would be very difficult for anyone to concisely convey that language on a sign to members of the public. So I would, again, reiterate that the staff report that was put forward as to the Cedars' permit in, I believe it was May of this year, did give an interpretation of the existing language that we believe then allows Malibu, if it rejects the amended modifications, to move forward under the existing language and begin approving signs, so long as they are truthful. So with that, again, I would just urge council before adopting language that will then be untested and that could be open to interpretations that require extremely complicated signage for anyone to put up a truthful sign. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's bring it back to the dais. Anybody have any questions or comments?
I do.
Bruce?
Steve? What do you think of the comments we just heard from the attorney?
After discussing this and looping in the city attorney here, we did discuss this. We both feel, I don't mean to speak for you, Assistant City Attorney, Kristen, I believe it would be very difficult to make that interpretation as it is not formalized, and the code, as I mentioned, and we can put the slide up there, it made it very clear that these types of signs are prohibited. So I believe with that sentence in there, it would provide a very good avenue for the Coastal Commission to make a statement that the city is not following its own LCP.
To clarify what you just said, which one of our options are we looking at? Because you guys have led a very complex trail here, and I'm trying to figure out which trail we're supposed to be on to get to where we want to end up.
My recommendation, and this is a recommendation that is a joint recommendation, is that we accept the changes as proposed by the Coastal Commission, as it removes the language from our LCP about the prohibition and provides an avenue for the city to be able to process these types of applications.
I would also add that on the same day that this LCP is approved, the same day that the Cedars, you know, I don't, that their permit was approved by the Coastal Commission, and staff, I spoke with Richard, would find that under the new provisions, the Cedar sign would be approved if we accept the changes from the Coastal Commission here. The staff report, if you read it, for the Cedar application is really tortures around the term "purport," and it interprets that to mean only applying to untruthful signs. Well, the same purport language is also within this LCP amendment, the language they added. So if it, under the old one, if it was a truthful sign, it'd be allowed. Under the new one, it would be a truthful sign that would be allowed. And to say that they felt the purportment something different in the LCP amendment versus what was in, what they ruled on that same day about the term "purport" would be a difficult stance, I think, for them to take if this was ever challenged. This would also provide a stronger basis for the city in its decision and application to individual signs. I think that the, Mr. Talcott is a little too concerned about requiring a level of specificity in a sign that I certainly would not think the city would be required, would require of applicants to put in. If the sign's truthful, it designates, for instance, that the public, that the public is, has access and 25 feet from the mean high tide line. That would be sufficient, I think, to provide a truthful definition that would meet the requirements of the LCP amendment as modified by the Coastal Commission.
Bruce, as I read this, it simply says, if you're going to say something, you need to be truthful, and if you're going to say a specific thing, you need to be clear about it. And I heard the comment by the lawyer who spoke, but I would think quoting the code provision that applies would be a clear statement of applicable rights, so I don't see an issue with this.
Anybody else have questions or comments? Mary Ann?
I have a couple practical questions, sorry, from having taken these applications and then charging applicants and such. So given that the property owners are required to apply for the coastal development permit to place a sign on their property, do we, do we anticipate what the fee for this is going to be? Is that being part of our fee study that we've got under wraps? So we, coastal development permits can typically be $5,000 to $10,000, depending on what's required. So I just want to make sure, is that what we're looking at, charging property owners to place a do not trespass sign on their property?
If something like this were to be submitted today, the fee that I would apply would be the OWTS foundation, the foundation fee, and that fee basically covers noticing. It's the lowest of all our fees. I'm sorry, I don't recall off the top of my head what it is currently, but it would, to me, that would be the most appropriate fee to charge, because something like this is not an application that would be reviewed by multiple city agencies, like, you know, the development of a home would be. And my decision would be based on the fact that we would want to essentially capture some time for the report to be generated, and the notice in the newspaper, and the city's cost for the mailer. And that fee was really designed around noticing cost, and the council approved cost recovery for staff time to put together a report.
Okay. And then my second question, thank you for that, was, is this going to be an administrative coastal development permit, or is this going to be a full coastal development permit that's going to be appealable all the way up to the Coastal Commission?
This would, because of its location on the beach, it would be an appealable permit that could go to the Coastal Commission if they feel that an error was made in the issuance of it.
Okay. Thank you.
Anybody else have any comments?
Just one last comment, which, and Trevor or somebody can correct me if I'm wrong in what I'm reading, but if I understand this correctly, the city's proposal originally was to prohibit signs which purport to identify the boundary, and the Coastal Commission's allowing those signs so long as they're clear.
I don't believe it was to prohibit the signs. That was the, that was the original text that we sought to modify. Which version are you looking at?
Page 39 of the staff report, if I'm, LIP 12.9 is the example. I think, if I'm looking at this correctly, there's a double strikeout of the second sentence, which means we were proposing to put that sentence in, and the Coastal Commission said no.
I can, I can address that one, Councilmember. So LIP 129D, that was, that's part of the modifications to a section the City Council did not amend. So the Coastal Commission picked two additional sections, 129D and 3156B3, and those strikeouts that you see is the commission staff striking out existing language from the LIP.
And I believe this, our staff identified these after the LCP went up and requested for consistency that these changes be made, because the city did seek to strike this, this language and just leave it as being required by coastal development permit. Right, Richard? Or Joseph?
You are correct. That is what happened there.
If no change were made, what would the rule be? If the current law were in place?
Then the sign, any sign that purports to identify the boundary between the state tidelines and private property, or which indicate that public access to state tidelines or public lateral or vertical easement areas is restricted and shall not be permitted.
Right, that's what I thought. So those signs are not permitted under the current law?
We didn't write that. That was the existing LCP language.
That's the current law?
Yes.
Okay, so the current law is you can't have a sign that does this, full stop. The new law would say you can, but it's going to be really regulated, and you're going to have to be truthful, and you're going to have to be clear. So we're giving people more rights. We're not taking away anything. So I don't understand the comment of the lawyer. I'll move to approve the staff's recommendation that, maybe they were giving us options, but I'll move to approve letting the Coastal Commission know that we agree to these changes.
It is staff's recommendation to approve the modified changes.
I'll second.
Any other comments?
And before that, if the city attorney could read the title of the ordinance. And before that, if the city attorney could read the title of the ordinance?
That would be ordinance number 520, an ordinance of the city of Malibu finding proposed code amendments exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act, approving the California Coastal Commission's suggested modifications to Local Coastal Program Amendment number 20-001, an amendment to the LCP Local Implementation Plan Sign Regulations, and repealing ordinance number 483.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Let's have a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Silverstein?
Yes.
Councilmember Urein?
Yes.
Councilmember Crisanti?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Riggins?
Yes.
Mayor Stewart?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right. And with that, I'm going to declare the meeting closed, but I want to close it in memory of Martin O'Keikey, who passed away on July 4. With that, meeting is adjourned.
Great job.